On Zoom Gov with everyone. And so we really are appreciative of those who are able to join us on our various applications. And in a moment, we're going to ask our very amiable, yes, I'm still on the A's, Assistant City Manager Nat Rutanat Sathira to just review for everybody how you can participate. And then when he's done, we'll call us to orders. So I'll turn it over to Nat if you will do your usual outstanding job of explaining how folks can participate under these COVID-19 and Governor Newsom Executive Order, please.
Thank you, Mayor Roberson. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov. Joining on Zoom is preferred because there is no lag time. You're connected live to the meeting in real time. And this meeting is also being streamed on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with an approximate 10 second delay and also on Comcast Channel 25, which has a delay of about 90 seconds. If you plan to make a public comment, we encourage you to join the meeting using Zoom on the Zoom app or by telephone, making sure you join in time to accommodate the delay. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, please use the link or the phone number on the agenda that's located at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, you can dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Then enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, please raise your hand virtually using the Zoom app. Or if you're connected to Zoom by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Then you can dial star six to unmute yourself. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. When you're called upon, you must dial star six to unmute yourself. We ask that public commenters, please turn off all television or computers, speakers, or go to another room when you're connected by phone, because any background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling out each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. The mayor has designated a, or will announce a time limit for today's meeting with the countdown timer that will appear on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer will be accurate with no delay. And please stay within the time limit. We look forward to receiving public comment as always today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nat. So as we call our meeting to order, we'll remind people that if you do get a notice, an email notice of our meetings, if you just take a look at the link that is on the agenda itself, that's probably the easiest way to participate. We're doing zoom.gov and we had some really nice compliments of how much better that was from our last meeting. So you can certainly be a participant and be live with us on Zoom. As for a small fee, we'll even put your picture on the screen. No, I'm just kidding. So I'm going to ask our amicable City Clerk Clementine, would you introduce our outstanding city council, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith, I believe, is absent for the afternoon. Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, I'm here as well. So first item, a three-minute limit, please, is public comments of anything not on the agenda. If you wanted to share some thoughts about agenda items, we cordially and politely ask you to wait until that comes up. And we'll certainly give you an opportunity. So we'll just take a moment while our Assistant City Manager Nat takes a look to see if we have general public comments not on the agenda and hopefully within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey.
Great. And you know, we just noticed the chyron is incorrect. It's actually a code 831, I'm sorry, 833 is toll-free 568-8864. And the webinar ID is 1607729333. So let's take our first caller and that'll be Bob. And Bob, please unmute yourself.
Okay, thanks, Nat. The, I just wanted to point out that the settings need to be changed so we can see more than one person talking at a time. Usually you can show like a checkerboard and all members of the council appear at once. But so far, it's only been just you or just Clyde, or I saw briefly just Hans. But up in the upper right-hand corner where you can normally pick the screen, it shows multiple participants at once, that doesn't appear to be available. Okay, good. Thank you, Bob. We'll take a look because in the upper right-hand corner, there is a, it's called a tile. But I don't know if that's accessible or not. Do you know that right offhand?
You know, you know, I don't. We'll double check and see. Participants or attendees on Zoom should be able to change their view. But we do, we have needed.
There we go. Whatever happened, it works now. They're all there.
Yeah, I did it.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
All right, you're done for the day, Hans. Thank you. Anything else, Bob?
Nope, I muted him. So okay, I think, I think he's good. But yeah, for those who are watching on YouTube TV or YouTube Live and on AMP, we do have a setting where we actually make it so that it features the entire speaker and not a tile approach, because the screens are often so small that if it's tile, you just, you can't really even tell who's speaking. So we do a featured view in that case.
Well, in some cases like mine, a small screen is better.
Yeah. Okay, let's see if we have any other callers. We, doesn't appear that we have any for items that are not on the agenda. And let's see if anyone else has joined. Sorry for the incorrect chyron earlier. But I think we're in good shape. No callers for items on the agenda for the afternoon session.
All right, well, thank you so much. Let's go to our public appearance where we're going to receive a library facilities feasibility study report. This was something that our excellent library staff and Board of Trustees have been working on. And then along comes COVID. So it has been something that we've been very interested in, in hearing. So we decided very importantly that people would want to know what's going on in our library. And I really want to compliment our library.
We do a teacher.
Online outreach. I get so many compliments from people how they contact the library, they can get materials online, or they can go to the door and everything is prepared for them. And so like the entire world, really, when you think about it, we're all making those accommodations and doing our very best during this pandemic to provide services safely and the best way that we can. And it just requires a lot of patience and understanding that this too shall pass. And meanwhile, our city staff has really stepped up and the library has been one of those wonderful institutions. The city itself has its own library, not part of the Monterey County Library System. I think one of the few independent libraries, probably in the county. And they've just been a yeoman's job. And we look forward to that library being active and vibrant and all the kids and seniors and everybody back onsite, taking advantage of this library that gets voted year after year after year by the weekly as the best public library. And so with that, I'll turn it over to our altruistic city manager, Hans Usler, who can make the introductions for Inga, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a word I really cherish. With that, I'll pump it just over to Inga. You, you made a perfect introduction, Mr. Mayor. And Inga, take it away, please.
Thank you so much. So good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and members of our community. As Hans and Mayor Clyde have said, my name is Inga, Inga Waite, and I'm the Library and Museums Director for the city. And I'm so pleased to be bringing the Monterey Public Library Feasibility Study Report to you. As Clyde mentioned, our library facility has been closed due to the pandemic. But that doesn't mean that customers haven't been using the library, whether it's downloading online materials or coming to use our curbside service. We were the first library in the county to provide a curbside service. And we're also still providing reference service over the phone and through email. Our curbside service has been hugely successful. We've loaned over 40,000 items to nearly 14,000 people in the 92 days that we've been operating that service. And another thing that we're doing is virtual programs, including a tutorial on how to use Zoom, which I'm sure many of us could have used in these early days. But we still have some folks that are gaining those skills. And it just shows me how invested our community is in the library. You know, we are California's first public library. We were established in 1849 and we've been serving our community for 171 years. Back in, in, let's see, 1998, the council said, hey, you know, it looks like you might need to renovate this library and possibly expand it. We did a study in 2001 and indeed thought, yeah, we want to stay in place, but could expand and renovate. That got shelved because of 2002 economic downturn. And it's just something that we have had on the back burner. But thanks to the council in 2018, we received some funds to do a study that launched in 2019. And we brought on an excellent consultant to work with us. That's Group Four Architects Research and Planning. And they convened a really great process to get a lot of community input. So they used the community input, their expertise, input from our staff and from our library trustees, and came up with a report that we're going to be sharing with you today. And so I want to introduce the principal from our consultants, Dawn Merks. And she's going to give you the report. So Dawn, please take it away. It looks like Dawn is muted. I am muted. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully you can hear me now. I would like to share my screen too. So I don't know if Nat can enable that.
Yes, you should be able to share your screen, but let's double, let's try this one more time. There we go. If you try that one, try that now.
Okay, there we go.
Super.
It's coming, folks. Sorry about the delay. Okay. And so we are here to give you the report that we have been working on with the library, Library Board of Trustees, and the community. Our feasibility study really was completed in 2019. And the action that is being looked for from council tonight is to receive the library facility feasibility study report, refer the report to city staff to consider within the framework of citywide future capital improvement planning. We have a project overview for you. We have facility assessment, community needs findings. We have current library trends and best practices. We have program and site options. Want to summarize the Library Board of Trustees recommendations for you and then talk a little bit about next steps and.
Is it just me or did we lose her connection?
Yeah, we've lost, Dawn, we've lost you, your voice.
We did a dry run this morning, which worked perfectly. So is there a way, Inga, to reach Dawn by phone?
Sure.
Yeah, her screen is frozen, actually, huh?
Okay.
Oh, there she is.
There she is.
Am I back now?
You're back now. So we lost you maybe two seconds ago. So if you can start the last slide again.
Yes, I can.
Great.
Let's see, I think we are still on, oh, okay. Okay, on the project schedule, the three steps, assessments, options, and recommendations. Everybody hearing me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. As we look at an overview of your community and the impact the library has, it's very significant, especially when we look at it compared to state average. Your visits per capita are 280% of state average. Your visits to the facility are 150%. Circulation is incredible at 228%. And then the attendance at the fabulous library programs is also incredibly healthy at 236%. Internet and technology is also very important and is well-used at the library. And so the library really does have a huge impact on the community. And as we've just heard, probably even more so in the pandemic. The facility itself does need a little love, I will say, in terms of accessibility. There are still ADA accessibility improvements that are needed for the building, life safety. There's fire barriers that are needed, sprinkler system maintenance, as well as other improvements. The building systems are probably some of the most important improvements that can be done to the building. HVAC, electrical systems, as well as plumbing systems are needed for repair. Architecturally, the finishes in the envelope are worn and could use repair or replacement. And then functionality, the existing constraints of the existing building and the layout, it really doesn't maximize the opportunity for the public or the community to use the space. Just something we should note here, on the 2012 National Historic Landmark District Survey, it did find the library to be individually eligible for the local historic designation. We did throughout the project have a very healthy participation of the community. We worked very closely with the library project team and met with them three times at each phase of the project. And just to note that the press section of this committee was really fabulous. We had business representative, educator representative, library users representative, as well as non-users. We engaged the stakeholder and the community as well, multiple times, through online survey, in-person surveys, as well as phone calls and interviews. A summary of the community participation, over 600 people participated in the survey, 330 online and 300 in-person. Quite a significant amount of participation there. And what we heard in terms of the library services was the collections are important, children's spaces are important, quiet reading rooms, community rooms, outdoor spaces, and the California History Room, along with teen spaces. We're all in top priorities. And then when we look at that compared to the most important activities, we had reading, studying, events and performances, computers, internet, learning, tutoring, skills, civic participation, and creating and making. As we look at this data and really overlay the spaces with the activities, what we're hearing is the community is really in need of a full-service library. Based on this information, as well as information and experience we have with developing programs for other libraries across the country, we developed a base program recommendation of 26,000 square feet. The components in that include the marketplace, a community room, group study, California History Room, adult spaces, teen spaces, spaces for children, and then spaces for staff. And that is what we call our base program. Looking at stepping up one notch from that, we developed a 31,000-square-foot program, which expanded the base program by 5,000 square feet and includes increases in the marketplace, the community room, group study, California History Room, adult, teen spaces, children's spaces, and then proportionally staff. The next step up beyond that is an increase of 5,000 square feet and increases spaces such as the marketplace, the group study, California History Room, the adult, the teen, the children, and again, proportionally staff spaces. One of the things we wanted to note is that your current library is in dire need of being updated. So looking at current library trends and best practices, wanted to share some images such as the marketplace, which is really your new and popular collection. It has a space for self-checkout, as well as computers and technology. Then the adult spaces are a combination of active and quiet spaces and a variety of seating to do the different activities, as well as collection, of course. And then the teen zone. Your library really should be complemented. Just our multiple visits to the library, really impressed with how many teens come across the street from the high school and use the library and how the library's been working hard to engage the teens. It is a little bit more challenging when you don't have appropriate spaces for them in terms of social spaces, study spaces, and reading spaces, as well as equipped with furniture and interiors that are attractive to them. Children's space, creative space, play area, interactive learning, manipulatives, group study rooms, something that's really important in terms of both individual uses, group uses, homeschooling, business uses. And then the community and program room. Again, your library does a great job with programs, being able to have a space for large assembly, larger events, that has independent access and can be used both during and after library hours. And then, of course, appropriate staff spaces. With COVID-19 and the pandemic, some of the newer best practices that we're taking into consideration are for infrastructure, making it robust and flexible, that HVAC system having really good air turnover and filtration, and not infiltration, but filtration. And then the science space to be flexible. As we look at stackless libraries, mobile shelving, things that can be moved around to accommodate more space, laptop or handheld devices, small to medium study rooms, and a variety of seating. And again, something that you're doing very well is the outdoor courtyard, which can accommodate different activities outside in the fresh air. Technology also plays a big part in COVID, as you're seeing with your online checkouts, virtual services, extending the internet outside the library walls, increasing device loans, as well as digital browsing. So based on the program, we developed two strategies. One strategy was looking at options on the library site. And another strategy was looking at off-site locations. We came up with four options on the library site, a level one, two, three, and four. The 23,000-square-foot makeover is just building within the. The 23,000 square foot makeover is just building within the existing walls. Level two takes us up to the second program option of 26,000 square feet. And then level three takes us up to the 31,000 square feet. Level four is a big jump to 36,000 square feet. Off-site options, we looked at Lot C, which is a parking lot adjacent to the library. We looked at the City Hall site for a new two-story library. And in conjunction with a joint improvement project, we looked at the public safety site. And then just for the California History Center, we did look at the Stokes Adobe. Walking through the site options on the site, we have our first level one, which we call the makeover, and it is a 23,000 square foot option. Really, most important to note here is that within that first level and within the existing walls, that we're actually not able to meet the 26,000 base program. We are under in the marketplace, under in the community room capacity, under in the group study rooms, as well as the adult space and the children's space. And so in this layout here, the next plans that you'll see, we have Pacific Street along the bottom, Madison up towards the left here. Looking at concept level two, we are able to increase the library to 26,000 square feet, and we're able to do that by demolishing the addition that was done in the courtyard along the perimeter of the building and then expanding out into that courtyard with a new addition. We are able to fulfill all the program requirements of the 26,000 square feet in this option. Going to the level three expansion at 31,000 square feet, we are doing a more significant demolition on the building. We're basically taking off the right wing, the two-story portion of the building located over here, as well as that courtyard expansion that had occurred, and then building two stories over in this red area here. And with that, we are able to increase the size of the library to 31,000 square feet. And then the last option, which is the level four option, is much more significant in the demolition. And all we're retaining in this option of the existing building is really the front facade, which runs Madison and Pacific Avenue here. And then beyond that, we need to do more extensive demolition of the first and second level to be able to accommodate the entire 36,000 square foot program. In addition to looking at the program for the building, we need to look at the site program, which includes parking. And just to note, you currently have 50 parking spaces. With some reconfiguration, we're able to push that up to 62 parking spaces. But if we look at what's required for your onsite parking, it's 87 spaces. There are some parking strategies that were identified, such as the library lot, City Lot C, and the attorney lot, as well as a potential partnership with the school district. Somewhat compatible, just because the hours of use could potentially work into a joint parking approach. Something else to note in regards to parking is that your downtown specific plan actually waives the requirement for parking. And the library site currently is just on the outside boundary of that plan. And so if that's an option to go back and look at revising that could be a consideration. So just to note, whichever option is chosen for the building program or the site, that parking is also going to be a component that's going to have to be responded to. As we look at the off-site options for the building program options, we have the City Hall sites, and I'm just going to start with the plan here up on the top left, where we could do a two-story, 15,000 square foot per floor, 30,000 square feet total program, and then potential additional parking with deck parking over the current parking. Looking at the public safety site, we could do 30,000 square feet, either one or two stories. And important to note here that that would have to be in conjunction with another planned project for public safety. Some kind of joint facility could be done, or two separate facilities. Lot C, important to note that we are not able to accommodate the base program on Lot C. And so that should be kind of like an extra that option, since it was not able to be accommodated. As we look at the Stokes Adobe, consideration for that was specifically just for the California History Center. So all of this information was taken to our library project team, as well as thoughtfully given input by the Library Board of Trustees. And the Library Board of Trustees really looked at these options closely and considered them and ranked them based on these considerations. Satisfaction to meet the base program, ability to meet the community needs for decades to come. So not just looking at library services today, but looking at what's needed in the future as well. Cost effectiveness and usefulness of life, anticipated public support, ability to secure ongoing appropriate use of the current building. And that was an important one as well, because not wanting to necessarily leave the library vacant without a purpose was a consideration. And then ability to secure funding and work in concert with city priorities. So as we looked at budgets for the different options, we've included another column option, another column here with the budgets for the different options for you. As you can see, level one is in the 12 to 14 million dollar range. Level two, 28 to 30. Level three, 36 to 37. Level four, 42 to 43. And important to note, this is based on $20,000. And since there isn't a construction time in mind, it does not include escalation. I would note that based on current economics and this last year, that these numbers will need to be revisited at the time the project moves ahead. Off-site, we've also developed budgets. Lot C was a 20 to 26 million, not meeting the base program. The City Hall site, 33 to 39 million, depending on parking. And then public safety site, 33 to 39. And then Stokes Adobe, we actually did not include a price to that. We didn't have a conditions assessment of the building and understood at the time that the site was up for sale. So based on that, the Library Board of Trustees has the highest recommendation for the level three expansion. And that is because of its ability to meet the base program, as well as to meet the community needs in the future. They thought it was the most cost-effective and had the most useful life, also would garner the most public support, and that the ability to secure the use of the building for ongoing library use was appropriate. And then to secure funding and working in concert with other city priorities. So as the next steps have been identified is for the city council to receive the report and to ask staff to consider this within the framework of other citywide future capital improvement plans. And then public funding options include general obligation bonds, tax measures, Melrose Special District measures. In the past, there actually have been large state grant projects. I think some of you may remember the Prop 14 in the early 2000s, which funded a whole renaissance of library buildings. And then also taking into consideration the option to share about measure, an ability to meet other city needs, such as public safety or recreation. So with that, I think we are happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. And the four options I thought were very clear. I appreciated having those. And also putting everything within the context, of course, of our COVID-19 pandemic, as well as our economic challenges right now. But I really did appreciate the opportunity to look at four options and the recommendation to refer to staff to put in in process as we look at all of our capital needs. This is one of the reasons that I was happy to put Measure Y on the ballot, because Measure Y, in my mind, is going to take care of future economic challenges and all of the infrastructure that we have in the city that is aging and that does need improvements. Any questions before we see, from the council, before we see if there's any public comment, please? Nat, are you there? I would love to see the tiles, if I could, please.
Yes, and we can, we can do that. In fact, I think you have control. All participants and panelists should have controls to be able to see, see their tiles, but no, no callers currently. We've had the chyron up. If anyone is interested, if they intend us to open up public comment, we do ask that folks please dial star nine to raise your hand, or use the tool that you have in the Zoom app to virtually raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question.
Yeah, let's go to Councilmember Allen, please.
So appreciate the presentation and the analysis was very clear. One thing, though, that wasn't quite clear is the off-site concepts. Are they alternatives along with four, or were they kind of like additional space that would be included with one, two, three, or four if desired? It wasn't clear if those were additional or optional.
So those were instead of. So if we didn't stay put in our current location, what nearby sites might be used as the library? And then, of course, what would the library building be used for if we went with one of these alternative sites? And then after looking at the different options, the Library Board recommended three options that stayed in the existing site. They did not say absolutely no to a couple of the other off-site options, but said, let's not look at Stokes anymore and let's not look at Lot C.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Let me ask, Inga, this is Mayor Clyde again. I just wanted to ask you, during the the COVID-19 pandemic, where the library is operating differently, a lot of online activity, has the last eight to nine months changed to anyone's viewpoint about what a future library should look like? Because I think there's going to be, in our lives, the new normal is going to include a lot more of these Zoom meetings and online meetings and online access to media.
Yeah, well, the great thing is, is that I'm glad you asked. Don actually was at a conference recently presenting about best practices in COVID for library buildings. So I know that one thing that, of course, everybody has concerns about is the air circulation in a facility, having adequate space to be able to space people with social distancing. I know that that's really important. But she can talk about some other best practices that have come up.
Thanks, Inga. And I, and I think we did try to highlight those in the kind of best practices for pandemic. But I would note that where things have been trending to be more efficient and a little bit tighter on square footage, it seems like there's kind of a reversal on that in terms of planning best practices. So if we have a little bit of the larger square footage per capita, a little bit more space, then you're actually more easily able to adjust to the social distancing, separation, moving things out. So that flexibility is really, really critical. And we're not just seeing this in libraries, but generally in all kind of space planning for office spaces, community spaces as well.
Yeah, and also encouraging interactions where there's less touch intensive, and so like self-service, more self-service options. There was a photograph of an automated materials handling system for the staff area, so that things are more automated. There's less touching of each, each library item. So I know those are things that, and like self-service kiosks for laptops and so forth are all being encouraged.
That, that I understand, I think, and I appreciate that, but I'm just thinking, just talking to my adult children. We need a term for children who are in their 50s and are adults. But anyway, my good friends, and we talk about, did you read in the newspaper? Did you see this and that? And they say, newspaper? What's that? Is it online? So the question is really towards the trend of more and more online. And I'm just wondering how many of our, the books are circulated anymore? Because if you expand within the current library building, obviously you have lots of stacks of books. Are they being circulated? Is the trend more towards online? And I think when I was on the Library Board, we used to talk a lot about it being a community center as much as anything.
Yeah.
So where's the balance between the books and the online access and community access to the library?
So the community survey really showed that people still want books. They want materials. And we also did a survey before reopening, asking people, what was the service they most wanted? What was the service they used the most when they came to the library? And I think the sidewalk service model that we have right now demonstrates that, you know, people still want physical materials. 40%, you'd appreciate that, of the items that circulate are for children. And when I talked to PK Diffenbach, our school superintendent, and said, how can we best support kids during the pandemic, you know, and support their education, he said, they've got way too much screen time. They need physical books. And so there is certainly that bedrock of, of needing to have physical items. But in our plans, we weren't planning to expand the amount of shelving. We weren't really planning to increase the collection. We want to improve the collection, but not increase it. But we also want more gathering space for small groups and also to be able to accommodate bigger groups. And we go back to having physical group programs at some point, we will want to make sure that we have adequate space. Well, and I think.
Inga, that's just a great answer, and it's reassuring to know that people still like to have some physical contact with their materials. And I know teachers and parents and students are just absolutely overwhelmed, including our good Vice Mayor Allen, with being on Zoom all day long, interacting with their students, trying to get some, some kind of personal touch. It's, I just give them so much credit. Don, you wanted to add to that, right?
I just wanted to add briefly, the zoning that you don't have right now in the library, the separation of the different spaces, so the children can be children, the team can have their space. You know, that is something that was also part of the improvements that are being recommended.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you. It doesn't, thank you, Don, for your presentation and also the the committee that put this together. I really appreciate that. You know, the thing that really I wonder about is, it doesn't surprise me that the library is an historical designation, because the building has been there for a long time. So what, what my basis of my question is, the infrastructure itself, the electrical, that you already mentioned about the HVAC and the ADA accessibility, isn't that something that should be a top priority and basic one? Because I don't see it anywhere in all of the, the, I know you mentioned it, but I would think that that building would need to be upgraded almost immediately because of the, of the age of the building. Where does that fit into this whole process?
So option, all levels, one, two, three, and four, do the basic infrastructure improvements and could be considered a significant renovation.
What is, what is the cost? What are they looking at for bringing this building up to? I wouldn't say code, because I'm sure it's up to code, but bring it up to the 21st century in the, in the way of infrastructure. Do we know how much that, of that $12 million would cost to bring that up to code?
I can go back to the cost model and look at that, but a significant portion of it is, because, you know, the. is because, you know, the floor plan itself of your 23,000 square feet is pretty much a nice open floor plan, and that's why it is a good option for renovation of this building. But the structural, the electrical, the mechanical, and the plumbing, all of those systems, once you do a major renovation, need to be brought up to current code. And so I would say of the 12 to 14 million that we have budgeted for the Level 1, 23,000 square foot makeover, I would say probably 70 to 75% of that cost is for just the infrastructure upgrades.
And so, and so this building does meet the FUEL Act, I assume? And we don't have a problem with earthquake designation or anything like that?
So that would include the structural upgrade to current level of the code for seismic?
And the last question I have is the ADA compliance. Is the building currently ADA compliant or is that something that the city needs to work on first?
I'll let Inga weigh in here as well. It's been part of an ongoing improvement plan that's been developed for the library, but it has not been completely made accessible as of yet.
Great. We continue to work on it. A lot of NCIP funding went towards some improvements right after we had a big study in 2007. And so improvements continue to take place, but things like drinking fountains have been switched out and, and a lot of changes were made.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Well, unless there's any other comments or questions, Councilmember Tyler, please.
Yeah, so thank you to the consultants, Dawn, and the staff, particularly within the library, for all the work behind this. Super exciting to see this come to fruition and I look forward to how this continues to progress as we move forward. I have a couple of questions and comments, but first I would ask, and this might be a little bit of an indication of my feelings, but what would happen with the, with the site where the library currently is at if we look at developing offsite?
So that is one of the questions that came up. And, and one of the things we heard from a lot of community feedback was how beloved this, this facility is. People, you know, grew up with this building and they, they really love it. And so the thinking was if we were to build nearby, then we would need to have a plan for this building, whether it would be repurposed for other city offices and part of it be public meeting space, you know, that might be a possibility. But we would want to, if we did go with one of those options, we'd want to have a good use for it because it's a great location, too.
Okay, thank you. And then what is, I know this was discussed in the presentation, but what, what is lost by not doing option four? So if we go with the library board's recommendation by doing option three, what are we losing out from that?
Let's have Dawn answer that one.
I would say, and I hope I'm not speaking to the library board here, but I think there are some present in the audience as well. The Level 3 option, you're actually getting significant gain just with that, right? Because currently you have about 23,000 square feet of usable space. By going to the Level 3 to 31, you are able to get the significant improvements that you want in your space and all the different areas that you are not able to accommodate currently. The Level 4 at 36,000 square feet was really seen as the Cadillac. And I think you do gain more collaborative spaces, maker spaces, additional square footage kind of throughout. But I think the Level 3, 31,000 square feet program is a significant improvement and based on us as consultants, as well as your library board, was seen to really be able to meet your needs of the community.
Okay, thank you. No, I, so part of it, and just kind of my, my thought, and this is just my feelings in general about doing work towards our city facilities. I think making a Cadillac type of investment is, is a good idea for the needs of fulfilling within the community and also making sure that whatever it is that we're trying to do endures for a longer period of time. And so creating that flexibility to allow for future generations to say, hey, we have all this, this extra space and now we can, we can play within this and not have to worry about that investment later on because, you know what? The past generation, the past council was bold enough to think that we needed to go a little bit further. So I, I just challenge us to think, and I can't remember the cost difference. I think one, the Level 3 went up to 36 and then the Level 4, I think, started at 42. So I mean, I don't have millions sitting around, but I think from the city budgets perspective, I think that that difference, that delta there in regards to going to Level 4, I think is probably worth the investment. I, I'm also interested in hearing maybe a little bit more of what, when we looked at the options that were outside of the current site, the one that was most appealing to me, that my work is the one that shared site with the public safety. The one behind City Hall, it looked like it was underneath the requirement as far as square footage. So I'm not sure if that would work at all, but the one on the public safety site might seem like a good idea, especially because we're going to have to do infrastructure work for the public safety as well. So I think there might be opportunity there, but I'm interested in hearing why we might want to totally just remove that idea. And I'm also, I think, just two last comments. I, I'm interested in hearing from, if any of the board members are on the call, that would like to share some of the thoughts and feelings that you heard from your perspective out there and maybe why you feel like the, the board has come up with the recommendation that they've given. But my final kind of word here is really just thinking about future generations, right? So I really want to set us up for, for success here. And I think as we're thinking about the future and what libraries look like, I agree. I think Level 3 is, to me, is minimum. I think Level 3 is probably the base of where we should be going, but I think Level 4, if we can get there, I think we should really find that way of working towards that space. Because I think the way that libraries are changing as we move forward in the future, I think it really accommodates that in a lot of ways. So anyways, again, thank you for the work and, and if, and if there's any board members on, I would really love to hear from you.
Councilmember Allen, please.
I've got three comments. I know we've got a lot to talk about, so it'll be fast. One, I wanted to just follow up on Councilmember Williamson and say that I agree. I feel like, to me, the Level 3 is sort of the minimum, but I won't necessarily rule out Level 4. It really will just depend on what kind of funding plan we can come up with. And I don't like, I would just say, let's not use the word Cadillac. It's not a Cadillac. We're talking about impact. Which plan delivers the greatest community impact? And that's the one we should aspire to. So that would be Level 4. I like the idea of partnering with MPUSD to share their lot across the street. I think the hours, you know, when we need it most are evenings and weekends. That lot's almost always empty then. So I think that's something, no matter what, we should work out an MOU if the district is open to it. I don't know if that involves us, you know, giving them some money to do it, but I think it makes sense because that's basically wasted parking at key times. So I think that could be a win-win. And then the third comment was just to highlight or accentuate Mayor Clyde's comment, which was, I think if the voters pass Measure Y, that will immediately help us deal with the COVID impact. But in the long run, I am optimistic that once the economy improves in a year or two, that that will be able to be a source of money possibly for this project or other infrastructure projects. And so I just kind of want staff and our financing staff in particular to kind of file that as a possibility, something I would like to hear more about when the economy does improve. Could we perhaps bond against some of that, some of that tax revenue to get the money upfront so that we could do this project and/or other, and/or other infrastructure projects? Of course, that does presume that our economy does recover, and I do believe that will happen in time. So those are my three comments.
Good. Thank you, Allen. At Councilmember Tyler's request, are there, I know Bob Petty was attending our meeting. Were there any other trustees who might want to make a brief comment at this time?
Yep, there are a couple of public comments. We have three comments that we can take if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
You know, that would be fun. I would just remind the council that we're going to adjourn in a half hour and we have two more, one more item and a closed session. So yes, let's please hear from public comment.
Okay, and I can set a timer if you'd like as well. Our first comment comes from, last three digits is 763. And if you could please dial, dial star six to unmute, we can then hear you.
Hi. Hi, this is Nancy Sule. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. My concern, and at first I did want to say thank you to Inga for the great transition during this COVID because it's been wonderful to have our library so usable again. So I just kudos to her and her team. But my concern here with, that I just want to make sure that the city council kind of keeps in mind here is mostly to do with the parking part because it seems like you have mentioned some alternatives, but they have been also mentioned in other aspects of other issues that the council is dealing with, maybe not right now, but we'll get back to at another time. Specifically, I know the accessory dwelling unit has a no parking exemption. They don't have to provide parking if you, if you put another exemption, another family unit in there and rent it out. There's also been talk about some affordable housing, possibly using one of the parking lots on Pacific. And last, the third one is the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District and the sports field expansion that has been proposed and is, I'm not sure exactly at what stage it's at, but with the sports fields expanding and using then expected to use significant time on the weekends, the issue of parking was addressed by saying they wanted to use those city lots. They wanted to use the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District staff parking lot there on Pacific. And also the one you call C has also been mentioned by them. So you've got all these different places all wanting parking, but when we get Ms. back in session, those of us that live in Old Town, as I do, you do have almost no parking for residents in Old Town. It's, it's going to be more congested and I hope you keep that into your consideration. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Our next caller is Bob. So Bob, if you would like to speak, please unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to thank the city council for accepting Mayor Clyde's recommendation that I serve another term on the Board of Trustees. I'm looking forward to however many more years that'll last. Also, during the bulk of the feasibility study, I was chair of the board and so have been involved with it, maybe because of that more than any other board member so far. At any rate, in the beginning, Clyde referred to the library and community center or a community hub kind of thing. And that is what many libraries, including Monterey's, has evolved into. And so that's one reason why we need to look beyond books on shelves and checking them out for providing what our community needs. The survey that was part of the feasibility study and the more recent one that was done this year, both of them were very consistent so that it shows our community really wants circulation, they want materials, they want places to meet, want activities. And we have a, an ad hoc planning committee within the board right now, of which I am a member. And we are looking to the future for things we can create now that will last, that will meet future needs, and most importantly, that will be flexible, both in terms of physical space, but also in terms of means of presentation, range of the population. And the, the data is there. Nat has seen the data from the most recent survey that Inga organized. And there are, we just serve so many people that, you know, our per capita use is way up there and we need to look at how we can provide what we're being asked for and then also to provide both materials for circulation and space for meeting services, both live as well as remote. And I agree with Clyde, that's going to become a bigger portion of what we present. But we need to look at that both for the, hopefully, short term when the economy gets back on track and if we have more money coming into the city's revenue. But we're, we are looking, the board is looking, at what we can plan now so that we can execute it and have it last for a long time, both meeting current needs and desires as well as what we will encounter in the decades, decades to come. And that's why I'm so happy to hear a number of the council members say, let's not think small, let's think big and really make this something we can depend upon and use for a long, long time. Thanks very much.
Great, right on time. Thank you, Trustee Petty. We appreciate your comment. And we'll go on to trustee Jim Thompson, who's called in as well. If you could just unmute yourself.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Nat, mayor and members of the council. I, along with Bob Petty, were a subcommittee of the Board of Trustees, working with Inga and the consultants and city staff on this project. And I wanted to try to respond to some of the questions that were raised about some of the three alternatives that the, the board is not recommending, namely the Level 4, the public safety site, and the City Hall site. I'll start with the public safety site. That's a large parcel. And so you could conceivably get the library on that site, but some of the concerns that we had were the possibility of incompatible uses. Particularly the police building, they need to have a lot of security. In fact, I'm sure you're aware, they added a fence and would like to put gates on. Particularly with the jail, they need to have a high level of security, which is kind of the opposite of a library that you want to have is welcoming to all, is one of the phrases that the library uses. So trying to have a welcoming library right next to a very secure police building and jail would be a design challenge, I think. Similarly, the fire department needs to have ready access to roll the engines in the ladder truck in an emergency. So they need to have ready access to Pacific, which is one of the main viewpoints for people seeing the library. So we think it would be unlikely that the library would have a prominent location on Pacific like it currently does if it was located on the public safety site. So those were some of the considerations that made us concerned about, you know, how good a site the public safety site would be as a shared site with the police and the fire departments. In terms of the City Hall site, one of the concerns there was that it would almost certainly require a new parking deck, which would probably be, require something on the order of $7 to $9 million in addition to the 33 to 39 million estimate for the building itself. So that made it probably the most expensive site if you take into account the almost certainly needed parking deck for that, that particular alternative. And then lastly, and I'll cut it short, I'm about out of time here, the Level 4 alternative is very attractive because of the additional size, but it would require adding the, what's currently the mezzanine over more of the library. And so it would lose a lot of the atrium, that's one of the very desirable- And so it would lose a lot of the atrium, that's one of the very desirable features of the library as it stands today. So we saw that as a major negative to Level Four, even though it has, of course, major alternatives with additional space. And we were also trying to be cost effective in terms of, you know, having as low a cost as we could. So I'll cut my comments there. Thank you very much for your serious consideration of this report.
Great. Thank you, Jim. And we have no other public comment on this item. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
We very much appreciate and acknowledge the expertise that Bob Petty and Jim Thompson bring to the library board. We're very grateful. It's like getting free staff in a way. So we thank you very much and the entire library board and, and Inga, as well as your entire staff, really doing a great job during COVID. The city manager, would, would you require a motion that we refer this to city staff as recommended or is that just a given?
Yep, the recommendation is to receive the report.
Right. And to refer to the staff.
There's, there's no recommended motion to, to city staff, but we, we fully agree with putting this into the order of the facilities renewal overall for the city of Monterey. And so that will be part of, of our matrix that we will present to council.
Oh, excellent. All right. And then we really look forward to, we've just really scratched the surface here on, on the library uses expansion and so on. So we're going to cross our fingers that we get back to a, a normal, a new normal, measure Y passes, and that we can start looking at our, our public facilities. And the library is much loved as Inga and others have pointed out so much. So with that, we'll go to our, our second item, and that is to look at amendments to the CDBG block grant, that's the Community Development Block Grant money that we received from the federal government. And once again, COVID-19 and the economic pandemic, if I may use that word, has resulted in changes in how we normally would use CDBG money, which does go to housing, infrastructure, nonprofits and so on. But there's been a major emphasis, and I think rightly so, towards COVID relief, especially our rental assistance program. And that's why this is on the agenda because the federal government has been flexible to allow cities and jurisdictions to use Community Development Block Grant federal money in its efforts for COVID-19 relief. We still haven't received, as a small city, any CARES money, that's hit the county, hasn't really filtered down to cities yet. So we again have our fingers crossed, I guess that's, both hands have fingers crossed, that the federal government will pass a second stimulus plan that will reach city governments locally. So Hans, I think that puts it in perspective. So if you'll introduce a grant, we'll have a brief report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Grant will, will present to you how we are proposing to allocate $395,000 that we got in additional CARES Act funding. And in this case, I think we, we're trying to, to be cognizant of all the, of the rental assistance program, but also of other social service providers that we usually also help with the financial contribution of our housing funds. So with that, I punt it over to Grant.
Good work or good afternoon, council and city manager. Let me share my screen. You should be seeing a presentation now, I hope. So I'm going to start by saying this is actually a good news presentation. I know in a time of COVID and budget cuts, funding can be scarce, but in this case, we've actually received additional funding from the federal government. So a little background, back in April, when we approved our annual action plan for the block grant program, the council made a priority of funding rental assistance. And at that point, we had known we were going to receive 152,000 in CARES Act funding for CDBG. And so council matched that with 650,000 from our Monterey Community Development Block Grant Program for a total of 800,000 for rental assistance. This meant that our typical funding for nonprofits for their facility improvements was moved to Tier Two, meaning that if additional funding became available, we would revisit those projects and see if we could assist the nonprofits with building their improvement. Funding was also reduced for our home repair programs and our purchase and resale program. Again, the priority was on rental assistance, given so many layoffs from COVID-19 and that so many people who live or work in the city of Monterey are renters. And at that point, we were projecting our budget for the Community Health Block Grant Program to be 1.1 million. So why do the amendment now? Well, we are required to do a substantial amendment whenever new funding becomes available or if we decide to fund new programs during the middle of our annual action plan year. We are lucky in that Monterey was receiving an additional 395,000 in CARES Act Community Development Block Grant funding. And that funding is going to be credited to our 2019, 2020 budget year. Now that's because that's when CARES Act was passed and when we amended that initial funding in to receive the initial 152,000. We're also lucky in that we're projecting additional program income from the sale of the properties that the city has owned and repaired. These are low-income housing units that we purchased last year and we're able to fix them up and now we've been selling them and we have one more to sell and we've already sold two. Again, in April, we were uncertain what the future held, we weren't sure what the real estate market had looked like or our other program income. So we budgeted on the conservative side. But now, several months into our budget year, we're, it's time to make an adjustment. We are now estimating our budget at 1.6 million for the Community Development Block Grant Program for this fiscal year. Another key consideration for doing an amendment here is our timely use of funds requirement from the federal government. So HUD would require us to expand the majority of our funding by May 1st, and that's for our fiscal year 2021 funding. But the CARES Act funding for block grants is specified for COVID-19 recovery, and therefore we should be using that before our fiscal year 2021 funds for Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So we have our CARES Act, we spend first, and then we'll spend our regular program income on the program. That means it's very difficult to meet a May 1st timeliness test when we've just received an additional $400,000 in CARES Act funding for rental assistance. We now have parks only $550,000 in that CARES Act CDBG to be devoted to rental assistance. So our first substantial amendment is to that fiscal year 1920 action plan, and that would be to accept the new funding and to dedicate it to rental assistance. Our second amendment is to this current budget year for Community Development Block Grants, and that is to reprogram an equal amount, 395,110 dollars, from the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, since that funding is being replaced by new CARES Act funding, and also to allocate additional program income that we now know we will be receiving. This allows us to fund four nonprofit projects, a final phase of the used homeless shelter operated by Community Human Services, security camera system for some housing operated by Interim Inc. We can also repair several duplexes run by Veterans Transition Center, specifically they're looking for HVAC systems, so heating and air conditioning. And then Meals on Wheels of Monterey Peninsula, which is seeing a, a large increase in people using their services since COVID-19, they're looking for additional freezer space. We can also use this funding for supporting Casa Noche Buena, that's the new homeless shelter opening in Seaside, also run in partnership by CHS and Gathering for Women. This would also allow us to return funding to our home repair programs and also to fund our purchase and resale program so that when affordable housing units come up for sale, we can purchase them, repair them, keep them in our inventory and sell them back to new first-time home buyers for our first-time home buyer program. So again, this is a good news presentation. The results of these amendments would be to continue to fully fund our Emergency Rental Assistance Program, to fund those four nonprofit facility improvement projects, to provide additional funding to Casa Noche Buena, to again, fund our home repair programs, our purchase and resale programs, and to ensure that we don't get in trouble from our friends in Washington by meeting our timely use of funds test. So our recommendation is to hold a public hearing to receive any comments on the proposed plan, and then to adopt a resolution approving the substantial amendment for 2019, 20, and substantial amendment for 2020, 21, and to authorize staff to submit those to Department of Housing and Urban Development. And with that, I conclude the presentation and open up to questions from council.
Yep. Grant, thank you so much. I wanted to clarify my introduction. When I was talking about CARES Act, I knew it was going to CDBG and through HUD, but what I was trying to point out was the CARES Act as far as the general fund helping small cities with police, fire, safety, infrastructure, public works, furloughs, et cetera, that would be the next CARES Act. So I really want to clarify, yes, CARES Act is funding a lot of this activities. I wonder if I, Alan, if you wouldn't want to take a moment to talk about Casa Noche Buena, heap funds that are building the shelter in Seaside and how the city would be a participant? If you would, please, Vice Mayor Alan.
Yeah, this is a project of Community Human Services in conjunction with the Gathering for Women. The city is, I represent the city and the city is part of that joint powers agency, Community Human Services. We were able to acquire a property on Noche Buena in Seaside from the county for $1 a year rent and are in the process of renovating that property. It's coming along really well and it's slated to be open sometime around the end of November. And it will be able to provide, you know, individualized housing, transitional housing for up to 30 people. I think there's going to be 10 different rooms, so it's not like you're in a big communal room, but it's for, and, and this is targeting homeless women and, and families. And it's not just going to be a place to sleep, but there's going to be lots of nice amenities, like a playground for the kids. They're going to get food, hot cooked food that will be delivered and, and prepared by the Gathering for Women. And there'll be wraparound services because the goal is obviously to help those families find permanent housing. So it's coming along and if people would like to support that project as well with their charitable dollars, I know you could go to Community Human Services and they would be very appreciative. But they are, the, we, we do need the city's support. All, all of the peninsula cities, I believe, are supporting it to some measure. So this is a really positive step. This will be the first shelter for homeless women on the peninsula. And so really appreciative to see that included in this updated plan.
Thank you, Alan. Do we have any public comment, Nat?
We don't have any public comment on this item.
Okay, other council questions, comments or motions? Councilmember Tyler, please.
I just had a question. It's somewhat off topic, but somewhat related. When are, when is the process begin for next fiscal year CDBG funding, as far as staff's perspective?
Sure, we start that process next month. We'll release a notice of funding availability and we'll invite applicants to submit an application for funding.
And I'm assuming part of that process, we are, we've created a ranking or a scoring system to determine the, the proposals that are submitted, that they, they're ranked off of certain criteria. Is that accurate?
Correct. As in years pass, there'll be a review committee that typically includes Kenny Cole, myself, representative from the fired, or the police department, and two planning commissioners. And we receive all the applications, review them and rank them together.
And is there criteria for housing in, in there?
Well, for the applications, it'll be for public services, so funding for our nonprofits, and then we accept the applications for facility improvement. So those are two programs we go out for applications for. So it's really tailor-made for our nonprofits.
Okay. Okay. All right. Maybe I'll talk to you more about this offline. Thank you.
Sure.
Good, thank you, Councilmember Tyler. Councilmember Dan, please.
Yeah, the only question I have is the $395,000 currently for the rental assistance program. Do we project as a staff, a staff, do you project that we will run out of that money by the end of the year? Because I'm a little nervous about the winter, the winter session and our people without jobs needing those mon, that money for their rental assistance. Do you project that that money will be there by the end of the month or the end of the year?
Yes, it's looking like it will be. We had an initial surge of applicants when we first launched the program, but it slowed down to a steadier pace. Currently, we've expended about 200,000 of the 800,000 budgeted. And like I said, the number of applications coming in has slowed down, so I think we'll be safe moving forward for the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Are we ready to move on this then? Entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Clement Tyler.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes. You got me.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
And yes for me, and, and as Grant so nicely said, it's great news. And, and we, we love having great news. We've have five minutes before we adjourn. Obviously, we don't have enough time to go to closed session, so I suggest that we recess and we'll see everybody back at 7 o'clock. So we'll see you all soon. Thank you.
So we'll see you all soon. Thank you.
We're live. Welcome back to the continued Monterey City Council meeting today. We're very happy that you've been able to join us, whether you're doing it on AMP or YouTube or Zoom Gov. Yeah, lots of choices. Unfortunately, we're not able to see everyone in person and we look forward to seeing everyone in all aspects of our lives here when it's safe. I know we're all looking forward to that and of course, safety first. So with that, I want to turn it over once again to Nat Roja Nasatera, who is our Assistant City Manager for a brief introduction of how we conduct meetings and how you or have joined us can participate under the Governor Newsom's executive order of how to run meetings during the pandemic. So the floor is yours, Nat, please.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Rep. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov. Joining on Zoom is preferred because there's no lag time. You're connected immediately live to the meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay and on Comcast Channel 25 with approximately 90-second delay. If you plan to make a comment, please join using these means through Zoom and YouTube. We do ask that you go to the agenda at isurcmontreal.org and there'll be instructions there on how to join the meeting. To join by telephone, you can dial toll-free 833-568-8864 and then enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333 pound. If you are prompted to enter a participant ID, you'll also then be asked to press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, you can virtually raise your hand using the Zoom app or if you're connected to Zoom by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand, then *6 to unmute yourself. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. When called upon, you must dial *6 to unmute yourself. We ask that public commenters please turn off your television or your computer speakers or go to another room when you're connected by phone. As any background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. And the mayor has designated a time limit for today's meeting and we'll be showing a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Please stay within your time limit and we look forward to receiving public comments.
Very well done, as always, Nat. And now your next official duty, please, is to show us the American flag. Usually it's over Colton Hall and as soon as we see the flag, I'll invite everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Great. And oddly, it's not being shared, so let me pull it up. There we go.
Almost there. Okay, thank you, Nat. So I invite everyone to join your city council and staff in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to ask our outstanding city clerk Clementine to introduce our much appreciated city council, please.
Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Hafa?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Robertson?
And Mayor here as well. Thank you for doing that. Continued public comments, these are any comments that are not on agenda items. If you have some comments about our agenda, please wait, we'll give you the opportunity to do that. These would be any comments not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. And we would ask you to stay within a three minute time limit, please. Leave a contact if you would like our good staff to get back to you for any kind of assistance that you might need. So how are we looking at for general public comments?
Yep, we certainly have one right now at least and we'll take the first public commenter and the last three digits of their number is 084. And we've unmuted them, but they will, as we stated earlier, need to dial star six to unmute because they're calling by phone. There we go. Welcome, if you could please state your name.
Hi, this is Kayla Fatham from Villa Del Monte Neighborhood Association. And I guess I called on Zoom instead of my usual, so you couldn't see my name. But I'm calling in to encourage the city council, hopefully it will be the same city council after November 3rd, to continue their investigation into banning smoking citywide as a public nuisance. Not only, you know, indoors for restaurants per California state law, but I would really encourage the city to go beyond the state law. There's other cities in California that have done this and to ban it in multi-residential units, parks, public places. It really is a health hazard. It's been well proven, scientifically proven that secondhand smoke is very dangerous, just as dangerous as firsthand smoke. And, you know, now with COVID, which has been documented to affect adversely the lungs, I just feel that we really need to address this and I would appreciate the city council. I know you heard me before on this and another one of my residents in my neighborhood, but we're really encouraging the city council to move forward with this, have staff look at it and the city attorney. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kayla. And we have no other public comment for items not on tonight's agenda.
Okay, good. We want to thank Kayla as always for her positive contributions and suggestions. And yes, our staff is working on that as we speak, so thank you. It's on my list and updates to keep track of. So thank you, Kayla. Never hurts to remind us, that's for sure. Announcements from closed session is that we didn't have a closed session. So there you go. Under consent, we'll go right to that. A quick note that item four will be continued to our next meeting. And that has to do with the waterfront resources recovery facility. And so we'll have to request, the staff has a request to continue that until our next meeting. And then I know we've received emails and public comment on the, let me, number seven, and that's prohibiting fuel leaf blowers within the city. Probably a good idea to pull that from the consent, just in case folks want to give oral comments. I know a couple people have said they'd like to comment, so we can pull that. I think one of the items of discussion there was the time was at eight to five, was it nine to five, was it nine to three? And so we probably want to just take an opportunity to hear that. And other than that, I don't think there's, that I know of anyone who wanted, any public who wanted to pull anything from the consent or had any comments about the consent minus items four or five. We'll wait a moment Nat and maybe we'll see if anyone does.
For those who have joined on Zoom, we have 19 attendees, please raise your hand if you would like to pull any of the items that the mayor did not mention.
Or make a comment on any consent items minus four or five. Seven, I'm sorry, seven.
Mayor, if I could, could I pull five and I just have a question on 10?
All right, we can pull five. And seven and question on 10, okay. Mr. Mayor? Yes, just a comment on nine for me. All right. So you know what, while we're waiting to see if any of our public wants to join us, let's go ahead and ask councilmember Tyler to make his comment on number 10, which is grant funds. Tyler, please, you had a question?
Yeah, so I believe I spoke about this before, but first I just appreciate staff's effort in trying to find some additional funding here. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to continue leveraging non-general fund dollars to help fulfill some of the requirements that we have. There's been conversation from the Regional Housing Coalition, this kind of non-formal group that we have of electeds from across the peninsula that have conversations about how we can look at housing from a regional perspective. And one of the items that has been on the top of our list for some time now is looking at the idea of trying to work together across municipalities to have a shared consultant for all the cities for the housing elements as opposed to each city doing it on their own. Particularly because we know that all the jobs are, you know, most of the jobs are in the city of Monterey and a lot of those employed here live elsewhere. So to the question, the REAP funding and the LEAP funding, I kind of looped into this, but can these dollars be leveraged to support an effort if we decided to work collaboratively with the other municipalities on the peninsula to do some parts, some elements of the housing element as we prepare to execute that?
Okay, so I don't know Hans who would want to answer that, if the question is, can we leverage funds and do some collaborative work with other cities on our housing elements?
I will ask Kim Cole to explain the context. We are working on a regional level through AMBAG, which is a recognized governmental organization and pump it over to Kim right now.
Thank you very much for your question. So the grants that we're applying for, we do not specifically say or state in the grant paperwork who the city will be hiring to prepare our housing elements. So we do have opportunities to look at various solutions to that or opportunities. I do want to start off by saying that the housing process starts off in a regional capacity. The Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments convenes all the local agencies to look at the regional housing needs allocation and that those are distributed based. AMBAG takes the action regionally to distribute our affordable housing requirements. And that's always a very deliberative process, so we always start the housing element with that deliberative process. There may be opportunities that we can combine forces to do all of our background reports, for example, all the census data calculations that need to be done regionally. Or we can do them individually. We do just need to, we could look at various options if we want to.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had for that. Thank you so much, Kim, for your response.
Oh, good, good question and answer. Councilmember Ed, you had a question or comment on item nine? Ed, unmute, please.
Thank you very much. If I could also make a comment on what Mr. Williamson was just talking about, the previous item. I'm compelled to just sort of follow that up because I do serve the council on the AMBAG position. And as the funding came in many months ago, the discussion among the partners in AMBAG, although collaborative and professional, a variety of cities were advocating for more money. The city of Monterey receives $165,000 and some of the other cities that maybe a little more land but less population receiving more. So it's not without some jurisdictional, you know, push and pull. It was not easy. It took a series of meetings with AMBAG staff and the full board to finally come up with a formula. And we finally got there and I think it was, it was very healthy to go through that process. But the money going to each of the cities to assist them in their planning efforts, just divvying up the money was a high bar and a difficult chore, I will say that. So I hear you, but I'm not so sure that there's that many opportunities to collaborate with other cities to, especially when we start talking about sharing money and comparing what individual cities are doing with their own general plans. Open for that conversation, but just the experience, we got through it. Each of the cities receiving not the same amount of money because the formula is very complex. I'm glad we don't have to do it again in the short months, but every year it's a process. And so I'm glad that we're getting $165,000 from the process.
Well, I just appreciate your service on that and representing the city of Monterey. So I appreciate your negotiation tact as we try to get through that. And I don't think that this idea of working across the region is easy and is going to be easy as we move forward, right? I don't imagine that to be the case, but I think that if there is an opportunity for us to find some space for collaboration, we absolutely need to do that because I think that residents across the region really demand that, so.
Yeah, and I think the opportunity is with the professional staff of planners that are brought together in a series of meetings with AMBAG. So we've got some really high functioning folks that collaborate from city to city and different planning departments. So, and top-notch planning department, thank you, Kim, and all your department members that do that.
Well, I was just going to say too, Ed, that I would say that our city probably should get the most credit, right? Because I think that our city staff is really collaborative, but I think part of this process is making sure, less so in our city because again, we have a good staff, but making sure that the electeds are pushing staffs to make sure that that collaboration is supported from our level, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I would definitely say our staff is there. I want to move on quickly and I'm going to pass on that comment because I'm being interrupted. So I'll pass on the comment, it's not that important. Thank you.
On item nine?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to pass on number nine.
Okay, and while we had that really excellent discussion, Nat, any comments on, from the public on the consent agenda minus four, five and seven?
We do, and our first caller has the last three digits, three, three, four. They've called in, so please dial star six to unmute.
Good evening, this is Susan Nine calling from Montavista Neighborhood and I'm calling with regards to item seven, which is the leaf blower ordinance and.
Susan, Susan, this is Mayor Clegg. May I ask you to hold, we have pulled that, we're going to get a brief staff report and we'll open it right back up to you, okay?
Oh, oh, okay, um, thank you, I'll redial.
Don't go anywhere. Stay online, we'll just, you can, we'll get you to raise your hand again in a little while.
Okay.
To hang out, yeah.
Thanks, thanks Susan for your understanding.
Sorry about that.
Oh no, we're good.
Okay, that's all, so no other items on consent other than those two.
Okay, then I think I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with item four being continued and item five and seven being pulled for individual action. Second. All right, roll call, please Clementine.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, and on item five, we spent, I believe, the last meeting talking about state ADUs, accessory dwelling units, sometimes called granny flats and in honor of the grandpas and the gramps flats. So.
Mayor?
I was going to ask Tyler, did you want a little report or did you want to just make a comment and open it up for discussion?
Yeah, no, I don't think a report is necessary. I did just have a few questions that I will throw out all at one time, but my overarching feeling of this is, I wonder if it's even needed or if it is, are we missing some things that should be included in the interim that might help fulfill that? So I'll throw my two questions out. So, so again, I thought we didn't need to change the ordinance if we were going to stick with the state changes as they were and not go further than that. So I guess that's kind of my first question is, I see in the staff report that I think the intention is to try to clear up any confusion. So what about the other portions of the statement that may continue to provide confusion?
So let me try to address that, Councilmember Williamson. We really try with this interim urgency ordinance to provide clarity. State law states that the maximum height for an ADU or that the height limitation cannot be less than 16 feet. That's what the state law states and that's what we have to comply with. At the same time, the state law does not define what is the maximum possible height. And we don't want it to be interpreted to the extent that the maximum possible height can be the height that is required for the underlying zoning in the respective neighborhood. And so since council tasked us to bring this forward through the Planning Commission and gave clear guidance with respect to that process, we just wanted to create clarity and provide the necessary breathing room for the Planning Commission to further regulate that the maximum height cannot be less than 16 feet, but then let the Planning Commission look into the various height restrictions for the various neighborhoods and then decide through the public process what they feel is necessary as a height restriction for our neighborhood. So that is for us right now, the, let's call it a clarification while we put the interim urgency ordinance in front of you. Your second question is basically what else should we do right now to avoid confusion? I don't think we see anything else right now, right now on the horizon. This 16 feet and our interim urgency ordinance popped up about two, three weeks ago when we became aware of that loophole. It fixes that right now. It allows the Planning Commission to go through the process and define it as council asked us and directed us to bring it back through the Planning Commission process to the council. So I cannot really tell you what else, what else we have as potential confusions out there. We feel this is right now a real necessary step to provide clarity. 16 feet as required by state law, not higher than that right now, and let the Planning Commission do their job.
Okay, I don't want to push it too hard. I think I just am still a little bit confused about, I guess it's the fear that we might get sued over trying to say that we are going to keep it at the, what the current city policy is. I mean, I don't see where the confusion could be if the state, if the state requires us to do 16 feet, but our policies otherwise are still in place. So it's okay though, I just, if staff feels it's important, I just kind of wanted to get some clarity on that. But I wanted to also save some time. I know that this will have to come back in 45 days for an extension if we don't have something from the Planning Commission by then, which I imagine is the case. if we don't have something from the Planning Commission by then, which I imagine is the case.
Okay, good. Any other council members' comments on that item five? Any public comment out there, Nat?
We do have one public comment, and it's from Catherine Avala on item number five.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for pulling this for public comment. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. I'm new to this Zoom thing. So I just want to express that, you know, I disagree with both the content and the execution style of this ordinance. I'm pretty disappointed the council's brushing a height limit ordinance through. A lot of thought needs to be given to height limits as well as many other ADU parameters, and capping the height now at 16 feet is entirely reactionary and fear based, in my opinion. The limit virtually guarantees that ADUs will more closely resemble garages than houses. And really, who wants to see more garage structures in their neighborhood? And who wants to live in something that's more similar in appearance to a garage than to a house? So the topic of height limits won't be easy to solve, but we can, you know, leave that to the Planning Commission to further work through. But it does deserve that thoughtful and full discussion to ensure a good outcome. And doing the minimum now is not enough and will likely result in structures that cannot maximize their full design potential. And second, I'm disappointed to see this height limit come through in the form of an urgency ordinance. The staff report claims that tall ADUs are, quote, inconsistent with well-established community values, end quote, and that an urgency ordinance is necessary to protect these values. An urgency ordinance is to be used, quote, to protect the public safety, health and welfare of the public. So it's a stretch, in my opinion, to say that a tall ADU is a threat to public safety, health and welfare. I think this would be more appropriately considered via typical zoning ordinance change process. Based on the last council discussion on ADUs, it's pretty clear that most of you feel that the state has handed you a bag full of lemons with the new ADU laws. And I think it's time to start making lemonade. So regardless of the outcome of this ordinance tonight, I ask that the council get really serious on the topic of ADUs and give the the item full discussion and consideration in the future and not try to hurry things along.
Okay, Nat, you're muted.
Getting used to Zoom. Yep, that is all for public comment on item five.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for action then.
I just have one follow up question. And by the way, I appreciate your your comments, Catherine. You got me to even think about it in in ways that I I didn't think about before. So I I appreciate your enthusiasm for the subject. If we, so this, again, this will come back to us in 45 days, if approved, for us to reconsider. And then how long is that extension for once it comes back to us?
It's up to 12 months if I collect this correctly. Is the city attorney listening?
Yes, I'm listening. I think it's for 10 months. And let me let me pull it up. It's in the agenda report. Let me describe it real quick.
Forty-five days plus 10.
It's 45 days, and then it's up to the council to decide after that. It could grant something less. So after the 45 day extension, it could be extended again for up to 10 months and 15 days, and then subsequently for one year. But we're anticipating working this through the Planning Commission.
Okay, so so I'll I'll make the motion in the context of trying to move forward over this next 45 days, but it would be nice to see maybe an outlook of how long we expect the Planning Commission to to take in a potential timeframe of when it can come back to council next time this comes back. Because I I do fear that there might be an effort to kind of make this the standard when there's an opportunity for a discussion as as posed by Catherine. So again, I really appreciate her comments, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there more discussion?
Yeah, just a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, Councilmember.
Yeah, I I want to move this along so that we can get our planning staff and our planning commission an opportunity to really help us craft some policy that's going to work. I'm sensitive to the fact that we have a very complex city with a variety of different zones, topography, different R1s, R2s, R3s. And so I I think the intent where I was with this is I'm not ready nor am I equipped to be able to put a height number that is maximum that would have sufficiency across the city. I want to rely on really smart people at the Planning Commission and planning staff to navigate through and and come back and share with us what our opportunities are for those variances and the variabilities of construction. So I I'm not set on 16 and, you know, walk away from it. I'm definitely looking forward to, you know, seeing how this will work in different parts of our city. So that when there is an opportunity for an ADU that works, that fits, that does not, you know, interfere with the neighbors, I would like to see the ADUs, you know, proceed. And if it's needing to be 16 feet, I need to have that policy that gives me the guidance that says, no, this is the appropriate height for the complexity of our different zones and areas across our city. So I'm looking forward to the future of this, but 16 I know is not going to work in some areas. Just like 25 is too much in other areas. So we need more policy guidelines, and the people who do that is the Planning Commission in my mind.
Well, and I appreciate your your comments. And and I think that the interpretation of maybe a burden on on neighbors is incumbent upon the situation, as we've seen come in front of us several times. But I would also say that the, I would say, the experts of of the constituency as well, right? So I encourage folks to make sure that they're engaging in the process with the Planning Commission and in the council if and when it comes back to us.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think you're both pointing out the complexity of this. The state just this year passed major ADU legislation, taking away local control, basically. And with that, it's incumbent, I think, on each city to figure out how the ADU does fit in the city. And as Ed was pointing out, if you're in a single family dwelling area, 25 feet, four feet away from the property line may be onerous to someone. On the other hand, if it's in an apartment zone, that might be too small. Who knows? So that's why this gives us some breathing space, which I think is to protect areas that need to be protected. And I too have the flexibility to look at different heights. But I think it's important to get the protection in place. Anyone else? Roll call?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. Item seven, and that's prohibiting fuel leaf blowers. And this is the third time, I think, we've looked at this. And I know there was some public comment before. There's more public comment in addition. I think the hours of operation is something we want to really nail down. So there's been talk of the original, and I honestly forget what the original hours were. I think it was nine to three. Oh, good. Hey, a synapse just went click. I like it. See, I've got another synapse. And then we were talking possibly nine to five, then also eight to five got put on the table. So I think we need to clarify that. Then, secondly, this isn't unlike ADUs in a way. We're trying to get an ordinance established that will, I hope, start the road to eliminating fossil fuel garden tools in general all over the city and all varieties. But we're not there tonight, folks. Don't worry. But this is the step that we're taking. And there are some issues have been raised and the whole question of how do you enforce this? Well, I I personally think we need to get an ordinance in place so we can start the outreach. Today, we live next to Colton Middle School. We had a gas blower going all afternoon. And so obviously, we're going to have to let the school district, all of the educational institutions, the the gardening businesses, we need to get the notices out and make this a collaborative effort. Also, I can expect tomorrow morning about eight o'clock, there'll be a gas blower next door to me chasing one leaf. And it's going to be incumbent upon me to talk to my neighbors and say, hey, you know what? We're going switching over to electric. Let your gardeners know. And we need to reach out to the gardening community, too. On the other side, I do see more and more people going electric. I think it's a natural progression. And so this is a first step. There's going to be fine tuning going forward. We will deal with the enforcement. Hopefully, it's going to be done in a neighborly way and with lots of information to the sources of the leaf blowers. And so that's basically the way I'm looking at it right now with the the major policy issue, I think, depending on what time we want to do this. So unless there's anything else council wants to preface with, we can go we can go to the public. Vice Mayor Allen, please.
Yeah, you mentioned the time, and we did get a letter that suggested that eight to six would be better because it would more conform with our other noise ordinances. So I don't know if staff can speak to that, but if that's true, that does make sense to me.
Okay. Do we know what our current noise ordinance is with respect to loud noises, when construction can start? I think that's what you're referring to and so on.
I believe it's, and I have Kim verify that, I believe it's from seven to seven.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah. And personally, I don't want.
I don't think that's what the council or the neighbors would like.
Yeah, right.
I I if if I may offer something that the the direction given the last time was take it from eight to five o'clock. And and of course, the the time is probably, the intent was, as I understood last time from public comments, to expand it beyond 3 P M. because a lot of gardener companies are coming after three o'clock. So I I think if it's the pleasure of the council, eight to five, this is probably a very good core time. But if you want to consider that that some of our constituents may not go regularly to work and they prefer to sleep in a little bit, maybe nine to five, this is the more appropriate time.
Okay. Any other questions or introductions before we go public? All right, let's see if we we did. I know I had a couple people. Susan hopefully stayed with us.
She did.
And we can hear from her, and and we have other people that are interested in this.
Yep. And we do have, I think Susan, I'm not sure if she's raised her hand back up, star nine, but we do have someone, eight, one, three are the last three digits. And please dial star six to unmute yourself. Last three digits is eight, one, three. And you'll have to dial star six to unmute since you're calling on the phone line. Okay, maybe technical difficulties. We will go back to eight, one, three later and go to Susan, who has her hand raised. Susan, three, three, four. Please dial star six to unmute yourself. It's a two step process with Zoom.
Hello again. Thank you for taking my call. Few things. We have many people that come to our neighborhood association meetings to seek our help in when code compliance becomes an issue. And I want you to know that the association is very strongly in favor of this and will work hard to educate our neighborhood and try to make sure everybody knows about this change and hopefully will voluntarily comply. But as with other issues, voluntary compliance is never absolute. And as we saw with the mask ordinance, until we actually had some defined penalties and enforcement going, we did not have widespread compliance. And I anticipate some problems developing between neighbors and people sort of testing the boundaries of this ordinance and resisting. I think most people will comply, but what people always ask me is, well, what is the penalty if they don't comply? And in this case, that would be either using a gas powered blower or using other blowers during the times that they're not supposed to be used. So I would really like to hear some kind of a discussion or staff guidelines for what to tell people when their neighbors or their landscaping services are not complying. Who do we call? Is there a defined penalty attached after a warning, say? I'd really like some clear guidelines about that to be developed over the next few months because there won't be a 100% compliance, I'm afraid, without some sort of a penalty. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I think I understand the need to extend it to five o'clock because my own gardener doesn't come till four o'clock and sometimes later. So a five o'clock seems reasonable. I would like to see it changed to nine o'clock in the morning, especially since this will include weekends. We're a very heavily senior community and lots of people are home all the time, especially now. And so we would like to see it be nine o'clock in the morning. I think we can distinguish leaf blowers and gardening services from construction issues. We understand when somebody's doing a remodel that they need to work early and maybe work later during the summer. But this this is a weekly occurrence. And on my block, there's probably 10 different
Yep, I'm sorry, Susan.
Once a week. So I'd go for the earlier, I mean, slightly later time. I agree with Hans Uslur's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Bye bye. Thank you. And we'll try this or call in eight, one, three one more time. And please dial star six to unmute yourself. Hi, welcome. Please state your name, if you would, please.
John Sherwin of Monterey. And a good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few comments on this proposed ordinance. Per my earlier conversations to each of you, I've had four issues that I would like to consider this evening. And I think the first one has already been addressed. Hours of operation, eight to five, pretty much, you know, like addressed most people's, you know, like requirements. The second I would like to suggest is the city of Monterey taking sort of a greater lead and also stop using fuel leaf blowers and transition to battery operated leaf blowers in concert with the proposal. This would underline the council's sincere commitment to fairness and equity. In addition, the council should consider encouraging commercial and on all other jurisdictions entities to transition to battery operated leaf blowers within the next two years or earlier. Hopefully, by 2023, there will be no fuel blower, fuel powered leaf blowers in the city of Monterey. The fourth one is, correction, the third one is, I would like it would be helpful for the public if protocols and procedures the city intends to employ to ensure compliance and and are articulated both in English and in Spanish. Educating, marketing and information are key elements for code and appliance. And finally, the majority of land, the lawn maintenance activities servicing residential properties are hispanically owned and or Hispanic employees. Any fuel powered leaf blowers will place, I think, an economic burden on many of these local businesses during these trying times. Battery operated leaf blowers will require a significant financial investment, namely the purchase of several batteries due to short operating life of about 10, 15 minutes. So request implementation of this subject ordinance be delayed at least one year to January 2022 for a smoother transition of all concern. I'd like to thank you for your consideration, sir.
Great. Thank you for calling, sir. And we will end public comment for this. And we had one hand raised just in time. So I don't know if we want to take that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. We'll take one more. Catherine Avala?
Sorry, everyone. I didn't plan on commenting on this one, but here I am. Just wondering when I'm going to leaf blow at my own home now because I I frequently leave for work before 8:00 a.m. and arrive home after five. So that. arrive home after five, so that apparently leaves no time for leaf blowing. So I just ask you to consider maybe extending the leaf blowing time to six P M. So that I can blow my yard every once in a while. Thanks.
Thanks, Catherine. That's, that's all for a public comment.
Okay, good. Thanks, Nat. We'll bring it back to the council then and what's your pleasure?
Hey, I'd like to answer quickly Susan's question.
Yes, yes, about the enforcement. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, there are administrative citations which are progressively applied. The first violation is hundred dollars, the second is hundred fifty and the third is two hundred dollars.
Okay, again, and again, as, as I pointed out in my introduction, it's, it's my hope that the neighbor to neighbor can really help with compliance and enforcement as needed and as Susan pointed out with masks. And then the last speaker, Ms. Avila was talking about going to six o'clock. But this ordinance would allow somebody to blow on weekends from if we do go eight to five, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Councilmember Tyler, please.
Yeah, and Susan had also stated a later start timeframe too. I'm not sure how you all feel about that nine o'clock versus eight o'clock.
Yes, well, it's just a question of putting a motion out there and see how it goes, I think. How does everyone feel if Tyler, how do you feel about it? And we'll start you off since you asked the question.
I, I think I agree. If I'm sleeping in on the weekends, I definitely don't want to hear a leaf blower. So I, I, I think that's something that is, is reasonable. I, I I don't want to nitpick either. The, the last point that Ms. Avila made, but maybe a compromise could be five thirty.
Right. Or, or as I pointed out, weekends are available as well. And, and what we probably need to do anytime there's a new ordinance, we have to fine tune it. This isn't, this isn't cast in concrete. We'll see how it goes. And if we have a lot of public input going forward, which we hope we do, and that can tell us it works, it doesn't work, we'll we'll fine tune it. But I really feel we need to get something on the books. Yeah, Vice Mayor Allen, please.
Um, well, I'm going to try this out. I'll just make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation. And while I think I appreciate the intent of the suggestions, I think there's, there's nothing that's perfect and you know, as far as starting earlier, I don't know how that might affect some of the businesses because they have, they probably have to fit in a certain number of homes that they service in a day. And so when you cut an hour out of their workday, I don't, I don't know how that's gonna, gonna affect them. So I'm a little bit worried about that. And extending an hour earlier into the evening, I was thinking that might make sense earlier, but you know, after hearing some of the comments, I think, as you said, Mr. Mayor, people could do it on the weekend. So I think, you know, nothing's perfect. And if we have to modify this in the future, we can do that, but and I'm glad to hear there is a penalty. That's a very reasonable one that's built into this. I feel comfortable moving forward if, if somebody will second it. If not.
I'll second it. We have a second discussion. Thank you, Alan, for putting the motion on the table. Dan, for seconding.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, Ed.
Uh, tongue in cheek, I was going to propose that we have some other conditions on here that we, we really hope that people will take one of the weekend days off to be available and not work seven days a week. Uh, so as you pointed out, you do have the weekend from that window of eight A M. To five P M. Uh, I, I wouldn't want to extend it because most football kickoff is at either five fifteen or five thirty. So I'm, I'm thinking eight to five is your typical business hours. If you're one that wants to sleep in a little bit on the weekends, I'm not going to try and regulate that, but you know, maybe you're going to have to go to bed a little bit earlier at night. Tyler, and you know, it's, it's one of those things that the humankind will adapt to our environment rather quickly. We'll get used to the pattern. It'll be eight to five. We'll know what our neighbors and our adjacent properties are doing. And so we'll, I think, I've got a lot of confidence in knowing that the folks in our city are going to adapt and adjust and that eight o'clock to nine o'clock window, I don't think is going to be a tremendous burden on most people. And I think you know, they, they can probably sleep through most of that and you know, some, sometimes you may have to close the window to make sure you do that, but you're going to figure out what scheduled days the events are happening and be able to work around it. So I'm, I'm going to support it. Eight to five seems reasonable. If we come back in six months and we've got some more evidence that says we goofed and we should do something different, well, this is an easy fix. Let's see how this works and then we'll come back and fine tune it.
And, and I, I don't want us to lose the, the whole purpose of this. We're trying to obviously accommodate as many people as we can, but we have to remember, why did we put this on the agenda in the first place? And what are we trying to accomplish? Well, we're talking climate warming. And these two engine motors are probably the worst polluters that there are out there. And not only that, especially during COVID, just watching the amount of dust and spores and allergens that are blown by these leaf blowers. Yes, there still will be blown by electric. But the whole point of this was an environmental, public safety issue. So we don't want to lose sight of the, the whole objective of this. I don't. Other comments?
One last thing I would like to say is the commenter, one of the commenters talked about the city. And I do really, I don't necessarily feel like we need to make this part of the motion right now. But I would like to signal to our staff, I, I, I would prefer to see us transitioning out of gas powered blowers as well. I think it's setting a good example. It's being consistent. And honestly, look, we survived for a long time without these things. We can find a way to do it and that's just my feeling. I think we should, we should, we need to do that as well.
Yeah, Hans?
Yes, we are transitioning already calls from half a two electric leaf blowers. And last one at least, there is always someone out suing us if they slip on a leaf. And that's, that's a real threat scenario as well. So I just want you to be aware that somehow, somewhere, maintenance has to be maintained and we have been sued over leaves and slip and falls. And then that is also in the back of my mind when I look at allowing us to maintain our infrastructure to a way that it doesn't cost the tax by payers horrendous amount of monies to defend those suits.
Yes. Okay, are we ready then? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
And Mayor Reberston?
Uh, yes. Okay. And again, folks, stay in contact with us. Let, let the staff and us know how it's working. How how we're doing, working with each other, collaborating and, and we certainly don't want to hurt our businesses. Uh, so we want all of us just to stay together on this and it's, it's organic and we'll make changes as we need, need to going forth. We have three public appearance items. And in each case, we have a staff recommendation to table those items. And what we will do, however, is take one at a time. I, I think many of you have been tracking emails, conversations, et cetera. And I, I think, and I'll let Hans just explain the, the staff viewpoint in a minute. But tabling this is going to allow the city to take the time that it needs to take because we're talking huge gigantic issues here, policies. We're talking about our general plan, our waterfront plan, our land use plan, our window to the bay plan, airport land use commission. And we're just talking about how the whole planning process works. So when you think about the general plan, the waterfront plan, the land use plan, coastal commission requirement, window to the bay, airport land use commission and the whole planning process. I think the staff feels this needs to be tabled and needs a lot more time. So with that, city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that, that's exactly what I wanted to, to share with the council. You have received communication over the past twenty four, forty eight hours that, that really makes it necessary for us to say, okay, we, we want to table those items and regroup and come back with a, with a different approach that, that is consensus based with all the stakeholders. So for right now, I think with the input that we all have received, I think it's prudent for us to, to table all three items.
Okay, with that, let's go ahead to take each one at a time. And number one was eleven, I'm sorry. And that was to take a look at the priority B area of Wendell to the Bay. And what I'd like to do is open it up to the public on any comments they have about tabling this item because that's really what we're considering. So Nat, do we have anyone on item eleven who wants to discuss whether this should be tabled or not?
Yes, we have three members of the public so far and we'll take the first one. If you could please state your name and unmute yourself.
And Nat, before, before you do that, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask our city attorney and our amazing city attorney. And I, folks may be calling in about all three of them. And I, I think if someone, for example, wanted to talk about item thirteen, even though we're just opening item eleven, should, can we open all three of these at once? Or not? So we can just open it up to a public comment about any of the three of them, or should we just concentrate on one at a time?
I think if the, if the council is agreeable to hearing all of it at once, you can, you can do that.
Okay, because I would imagine that that may happen. Is that all right with the council if we just open up public comment on eleven, twelve or thirteen?
Does that mean we're taking action on all three of them at the same time or just taking?
No, probably comment.
Okay.
Because I think there may be some confusion. Okay, good. All right, Nat, with that, and once again, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone who'd like to comment about item eleven, which is the priority B area of Wendell to the Bay, item twelve, and that's multi-family housing at, on the rated property and thirteen was the expansion of floor area ratio for warehousing on Garden Road. All right, now with that, let's take public comment.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I, can I get a clarification, Mayor?
Yes.
Is this public comment just on whether we, they would like to comment on us moving it to a different? Or are they actually going to be discussing the projects themselves?
Well, you know what, since it was listed as an item, if they want to talk about the project itself, I think, yes, that would be certainly permitted. Thank you for that clarification. And but personally, I would hope they'd like to tell us about whether it should be tabled or not, but either one, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point. All right. And once again, if you want to talk about the proposed projects or the idea of tabling these, now's your chance to share with us.
Great. Our first caller, if you could please state your name, you've been unmuted.
Good evening. This is Softlight Malik speaking. I work with Nader Aga and R R M Design on a project on Del Monte Boulevard, which is part of Area B of Del Monte Street. And what we are proposing is a mixed use project that encompasses a small retail on the ground floor as well as parking and apartments on the second floor. And that replaces currently a parking lot that is used for selling a used cars, sales. And we feel with the city and the state needs for housing that this is a, a very compelling matter for the city to consider in lieu of having a used car lot. Behind us towards the bay, there are condominiums right now that are of the same height. And I don't see how this project can negatively impact either the airport commission criteria or the city of Monterey criteria. So I would highly recommend that the city would take this matter seriously and, and make good use of vacant land to provide housing that is desperately needed for city employees and city workers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our next caller, the last three digits of the phone number is six nine zero. And you will need to dial star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name.
Good evening. This is Christopher Barlow, resident of the city of Monterey and representative for the twelve ninety nine Del Monte project. I would ask if it's possible, we did have a few slides related to the intersection improvements if I'm not sure if those can be shared by staff at this time. But I do agree with the mayor and thank you, city council mayor for all staying up past my, my bedtime as a parent here to address some of these things. I do agree, there's a lot to consider here and as the council is going through the deliberations on these various residential uses on the windows by the bay, I would echo the previous presenter's point that we are right adjacent to an existing residential use. So it, it does seem like it's a bit disgenuous to say that a residential use is totally incompatible with the area. It's, it's a particular zoning. And I do want to make sure that we don't have a situation where we're having a the status quo, essentially not recognized, current housing crisis issues. Uh, but more importantly, on the level of the city council, I do want to highlight that the applicant for twelve ninety nine Del Monte has provided a historic opportunity to resolve some significant traffic issues at the Sloat and Del Monte intersection. One of the most dangerous intersections in the city of Monterey. And they've offered to basically deep frontage on the property to the city to allow for dedicated left lane in order to, as you know, in exchange for our preferred use of that property as residential with two affordable housing units in it. And I do believe that I've got Kim Lee Horn, who's involved on some of the early planning processes for that intersection as one of the public presenters here. Uh, and they may be calling next, hopefully with the assistance of some slides that we sent earlier. Again, appreciate the council's consideration of this. Yes, these are significant changes, but I do think we're living in a, a time where we are going to be looking at some changes to our city fabric. And I think this one is an important one. And really, again, want to thank the staff and city for their time on this. And with that, I'll, I'll see you the rest of my time there.
Thank you, Chris.
And our next caller here is Rick. I'm sorry. Yeah, Rick Hoyer. Let's go to, go to Rick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Rick Hoyer, resident of Monterey. I want to speak to items eleven and twelve. Item eleven, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we're coming in loud and clear, Rick.
Yep. Eleven, I think should be permanently tabled. This whole idea of, we have a need for housing, but we also have ninety percent of our, of our land in the city, and I could be off five percent, four or two. It's zoned for residential. We have maybe one or two percent that's, if that, that's tied to waterfront and the window on the bay and ancillary uses to window on the bay. So to give that up would be crazy. Plenty of area in the city to be focusing on housing. On, and I think you should permanently table this. Item twelve, there's a lot involved there. And I think I agree with you. I think there is tape that needs to be tabled to see really what is all going to be done, what can be done. And to communicate with the neighborhoods that, that abut that and would be impacted from traffic and other means as well. I know have a lot of concerns. So to have those discussions going on. To me, the bigger issue I've got is, is that we're starting to have all these projects come for conceptual, but yet it's not concept. So you're being asked to prejudge a project before you even have a project in front of you. in front of you. This is now the second and third one of these I've seen in about the last year and a half or two years. And in my prior twenty-five to thirty years of involvement with the city, it never happened. So I question even having this process happening when you don't have a project in front of you. You're being asked almost take positions in advance of anything. The applicant's going to go away with input from that from you, assuming how you're going to be ruling before you even had planning commission or anything else even reviewing these projects. Item thirteen, I don't have anything to speak to, and I don't know enough about it. But if the staff feels it needs to be tabled, I think it should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. And let's see here, next caller is three four zero. Three four zero, please dial star six to unmute yourself on your telephone line. Okay, three four zero, last four digits of your telephone number, please dial star six to unmute. Please dial star six to unmute. This is a with Zoom, it requires a two-step process. Once we unmute you, you have to also give permission to unmute yourself. And for folks who aren't doing that, unfortunately, we cannot hear you. So we'll go ahead and go to the next caller. Six nine. Oh, there you go.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council's Richard Rossello calling. I spent a lifetime attending meetings and in helping our city develop our general plan, Parks and Rec Master Plan, the waterfront plan. In the middle of a pandemic, I urge you to table all these changes. Three or four people calling, it's not the hundreds, if not thousands of people that we met at the conference center, at the city council chambers, we've met all over the city over these plans. And I I'm feeling overwhelmed with a planning commission hearing items, and these are major changes, and we can't come to meetings. And and I hear three, four, five, six people call in. It just doesn't make sense to me. I I urge the council to table these massive changes to our plans, which these plans are why Monterey is beautiful today. You're all aware of all the hotels that wanted to build along their coast, and we stopped it. The golf museum that wanted to take the window on the bay. This all came into these plans, and and these ad lib changes are are very disturbing to me that we can't actually meet and have open discussions on. On the window on the bay priority B, I have spent years along with you working to complete that eighty-one-year-old dream. Priority B is essential for the development of the north part of the window on the bay, which is devoid of people because there's no access. Tamsi is taking the parking strip on Del Monte. There, when that is gone for the rapid bus transit, there will be no parking, no access to the window on the bay. Priority B properties are what give that access. The other points I want to bring up is sea level rising and the tsunami zone. These are very real risks where there are no sand dune protections. The traffic on Del Monte and putting residential cars, a hundred and seventy a day going in and out of a development is just impractical from the traffic standpoint. So I urge you to table these changes to our plans until we get the vaccine and we can meet in a regular fashion again. All right, thank you for the time and good night.
Good night, mature. Thank you. Our next caller, not sure if they've called already, six nine zero.
Yeah, they did.
They did. Okay, great. Yeah, they're they're still appearing here. So I'm going to go to, let's see, lower hand, Bradley Scotch. Not sure if I pronounced the name correct.
Yes, it's Bradley Scher. And I'm actually a community member of the Awkwato Community Association, which abuts item twelve. I used to be a Monterey Bay resident up to three months ago. And I would just say that part of the beauty of Monterey and this area in general is the forestry that works throughout our city and our residential communities and having like deer run through the community and stuff, and taking away land that has already been preserved for this long, to me, really changes the feel of our area. And I would urge the city to keep looking for other land that's already been disturbed and used up and isn't pristine wildlife to meet our housing crisis. So that's all I have. And I hope to find out more as we go on. And so, yeah, thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Bradley. And second time tonight, Matt, you're pulling a mayor, you're muted yourself again. That's my favorite trick.
I've got I've got three or four different windows, and it's hidden in the bottom. So sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Got to do better with this Zoom thing. So last three digits, two oh four. If you would please dial star six to unmute yourself, two zero four.
Good evening, Tom Rowley. I'd like to just address the process. I was the only caller when this was discussed on the item eleven on the window on the bay priority B came up. And my comment then, this should have been rejected out of hand by the staff. Unfortunately, there was a well, fortunately, there was a very thorough discussion by the planning commission. It was an afternoon session. I doubt if very many people were watching the meeting. It is true, as Richard Rossello indicated, it's almost impossible to to attend and participate at a meeting in person on these complicated issues. And the thing is, procedurally, that, you know, how many years, eighty-some years, the window on the bay project? I think both of the owners or developers, whoever has the development rights, and I understand on the the tire shop and the former Redwood shop, the the current owner or whoever has the buyer's rights, outbid the city. And obviously, the city still would like to purchase those properties at a opportune opportunity time. So the thing is, we still would like to follow through with the plan that's been eighty years. And I think the the whole idea, I think if the city council wants to take a look at the video of the discussion that was very thorough, I think it was almost an hour at the planning commission, unfortunately, they did not vote, although it was seven oh, we're not in favor of it. I think if they had taken a vote, they would have recommended non-denial. So the thing is, why these people are coming back or these applicants are coming back and trying now to convince the city council when they received a totally negative response from the planning commission is just not understood. So again, I would recommend if you want to learn more about this, take a look at the discussion and the pros and cons that were discussed. Basically, there really weren't no pros and the cons at the planning commission. So again, procedurally, this is a problem, making these major changes piecemeal while we're in a time when we can't have really good community participation. So again, let's not do something that procedurally we will regret later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Our next caller is Gary Hoffman. And Gary.
Yes. Good evening, council members. Hopefully, my connection is decent, and you can hear me. I'm the Division Five Director for the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. However, I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen on item twelve and not as a representative of the Water District Board. I recognize that the city of Monterey is not in my division, but the subject property is adjacent to my division boundary. And this issue was brought to my attention by a constituent in my district that lives close to the proposed site. As you consider providing guidance to staff regarding changing the zoning from the reference lot from low density to a higher density classification, please recognize and consider in your decision that an intermittent stream runs through the property that currently provides riparian habitat for wildlife. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our next caller here is Brad Slama, and we'll take Brad's comment. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Brad Slama here, proponent for item thirteen. I think what I'm hearing is a lot of dissent on items eleven and twelve, maybe not so much on thirteen. Just a real brief synopsis, I am okay with tabling. If the council decides that's what they want to do, if if they do decide that they want to go ahead and bring this issue item up, I'd like an opportunity to share my opinion at that time. We are doing some great things on Garden Road. Thank you to the council for that. We're in the middle of potentially a hundred affordable housing units on Garden Road, and this project would help assist in creating some major public access ways, all privately funded. So if we do get the opportunity, I'd appreciate your time to speak later. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Brad. And our next caller is Derek Wu. Derek?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Derek Wu, and I'm a transportation consultant at Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I'm speaking in regards to item eleven about the potential roadway improvements at the intersection of Del Monte and Sloat Avenue in Area B by the twelve ninety-nine Del Monte property and the potential benefits to traffic operations and safety. The existing Del Monte and Sloat Avenue intersection consists of two travel lanes, both eastbound and westbound direction. And currently, the intersection does not have a designated westbound left turn lane for vehicles to turn onto Sloat Avenue. Currently, vehicles wanting to turn left onto Sloat are controlled by a short protected signal phase, followed by a permissive signal phase. And during the permissive signal phase, left turn vehicles must yield to opposing cars before they can complete their turn when there are sufficient gaps in traffic. Under the current intersection layout, vehicles wanting to turn left onto Sloat often blocks the inside travel lane, which creates congestion in the westbound direction on Del Monte and creates the potential for accidents. If cars attempt to maneuver around the left turn vehicle in the in the lane, the situation creates the potential for rear end and side swipe collisions. The potential improvement to install a westbound left turn pocket at Del Monte and Sloat Avenue would enhance traffic operations and safety at the intersection with a dedicated left turn lane, left turn vehicles would be able to queue and no longer block the westbound through traffic on Del Monte. This condition would, one, improve traffic flow, and, two, reduce the potential for side swipe, rear end, and broadside collisions. The potential Del Monte and Sloat Avenue improvements would also enhance bicycle and pedestrian safety at the intersection and improve access to the Monterey Bay Coastal Trail. The potential roadway improvements would include constructing new ADA compliant sidewalks, curb ramps, and crosswalk facilities on the north side of Del Monte, which would improve multi-modal connectivity between the existing rec trail and the city street network. Overall, the potential left turn lane and roadway improvements at Del Monte and Sloat would provide several benefits and is a clear solution to improve traffic operations and improve traffic safety at this intersection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is eight nine nine via phone, eight nine nine, please dial, there we go, star six.
Hi, my name is Nina Beatty, and I I wanted to comment on item number twelve. I agree with tabling, but I also agree with other speakers about in this current situation with the COVID restrictions on meeting, that these are major issues that need to be considered when everyone can meet together and talk in a chambers together. On number twelve, the only forty out of the two hundred families that will be housed at this facility are the units are affordable. The rest will be at market rate. And the need right now in this area is for affordable housing, not for additional market rate housing. And I think we're going to be surprised when we see the results of the census. I think there's going to be a lot of there are going to be reduced numbers for the population of Monterey as well as the surrounding communities. I'm very concerned about the water situation. Another development was approved recently in the same area, and water was drawn from an existing aquifer. I know from meetings at the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District that they have been looking for other water sources. And I'm under the assumption that they draw some water from this aquifer. But I think it's it's unfair to existing residents when there is a source of water that's being and residents are being urged to conserve that a new development is coming in, especially market rate houses, that this is not available to Calam, well, to our Water District to draw from to supply existing needs. And it's also very good water from this aquifer. The rest of us are taking water from the seaside basin, which is contaminated with Ford ord runoff and also is now recycled from the sewage plant. So this development would get good water, and yet they do not have onsite treatment, and their sewage would be shipped off to the sewer plant to then be recycled so the rest of us in Monterey get to drink that. And there's a there's an issue of fairness in that. I'm concerned also about the comment of an intermittent stream, which depleting the aquifer would also make the stream, the potential of it going dry permanently. It's in a fire zone surrounded by forest. And there's an open parcel next to it. So I'm curious, is this step one and the step two would be a project immediately adjacent with also these 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 two store story buildings? The roads, as you know, are narrow through that canyon, and evacuation in the in event of emergency, as well as the traffic on there, would be is a severe issue. And again, back to conservation of water, the rest of us are being urged to conserve water. And yet, these new projects are popping up with that are not just a one house here and a one house there. These are developments. And I think that the needs of the rest of the community need to be considered when when looking at something like this. So I would ask for just to be tabled, if if not completely denied. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nina. Our next caller is Randy Russom. Randy?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Randy Russom. I'm with R M Design Group, an architecture firm that works, well, actually, quite a few projects in Monterey County. One of our clients is Nader Aga, and we were asking for the concept of for eleven oh seven, eleven seventy-nine Monterey, I'm sorry, Del Monte. And the intent was to show what could be done on that parcel within to affect affordable, essentially affordable by design housing. There's a one bedroom, a two bedroom studio units with mixed-use commercial on an underutilized lot in an area where that is surrounded by residential and commercial use. We're not butting up against any, while it's still within that plan area, it's not butting up against anything that anytime the foreseeable future will be evolving into something more of a public space than it currently exists as a parking lot. So we encouraged the planning planning staff to come forward from planning commission, from their summary, wasn't a denial, it was just shot down to get additional feedback on this area and these types of projects. Our goal is to to find the opportunities here to show what could be done at a reasonable scale, not very intensified type of development, and start the conversation to see what the what the opportunities are, what the appetite is. While, of course, you're going to be tabling this, what I do encourage is any feedback that you can give staff on direction would be useful or that we could hear. Additionally, I would be concerned that tabling could turn on into a very prolonged process. So I would encourage some prioritization of this. I know budgets and time are are thin, and everybody has priorities, but we are bringing this forward as a concept to discuss. And just speaking briefly on the idea of concepts and not actual projects, the cost of putting together a project, full project's middle can be extremely expensive, especially when there's we're talking about coastal commission and rezoning and 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 plans being changed. The opportunity to bring an idea The opportunity to bring an idea forward and see if that even has a pathway to, to a project is, is a great opportunity for us as designers and planners. And so we appreciate that you take the time to look at those things. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Russum. Our next caller, we will unmute if you could please state your name, we would appreciate it.
Good evening, this is Lee Whitney from the Glenwood neighborhood. I'm also the president of the Neighborhood Association and the Neighborhood Representative for the NCIP. I'm speaking on item number 12 this evening. It's the wrong project for the wrong place and the wrong time and it creates more issues than it can solve. Our housing obviously is a problem, but doing 200 units with only 40 of them being below market rate and the rest of them being at regular market is not solving the issue. It creates more. There, that area is an extremely high fire hazard and the impact on the trees and the habitat. We've been losing more trees and habitats to fires and now you want to take them out on a beautiful wooded forested area? Traffic's my other favorite subject, where I was Canyon and Barnett Segal are one-lane speedways for years. Putting that development in there will increase threefold the traffic in there, the noise, just the disruption to the whole neighborhood and the whole park and developing area. Interference structure, it doesn't exist. We'd have to put that in. It's totally needed to be added. Who foots the bill for that? The city of Monterey is out of cash to do extra things like that, particularly during a pandemic. I happen to agree with Richard Musello and Requier regarding that we're putting the cart before the horse. We need to do the proper procedures. And I, I would urge you to take the time to go look at that property. There's the old Capital Park property next to it that we're going to be turning into a park with trails, et cetera. And we do not want the noise and the congestion and the traffic, the habitat, the tree, beautiful trees destroyed and taken out. We don't want that area to happen. So I would, I would really urge the council to please table this issue until it takes its proper steps to go through the chain of command to get this approved and that we have more time that we can have and a better time that we can put more public input because it involves quite, in fact, two neighborhoods are involved at this point. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you Lee. Our next caller is Michael Groves. Welcome Michael. Just have to select to unmute your mic. There we go.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, Michael Groves with EMC Planning Group. I wanted to speak on item number 13. I just wanted to encourage you to separate 13 from the other two items. And I know Andy from Planning has worked very hard on creating flexible, yet very restrictive code standards for Garden Road so that we can do some recreating and making place out in Garden Road. So I'd really like to encourage you to direct staff to move item 13 forward, even if you table it tonight to have staff bring it back to you so that that item can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are, we have no more public comments on these three items and we'll turn it back to the mayor.
Let me make sure I'm unmuted. As always, we very much appreciate the public comment. Why don't we take a little break and come back together in nine minutes at 8:40? So let's take a little recess stretch. We've been at it here an hour and a half, so if that's okay with everyone, we'll see you in about nine minutes. A brief break. I know in my many years of teaching fifth graders, I had them for about an hour. And then when the eyes glazed over, I knew it's time to take a little break. Not that I'm saying you guys can't go for hours and hours, that's just me. All right, we appreciate the, the public input and I kind of expressed my viewpoint in my introduction. So I will turn it over to the council at this point. And we're looking at item 11, the question is whether to table item 11 or not. And that was the priority B area. So if anyone wants to start out, feel free. And I'm always willing to as well. So council member Dan, please. And motions are always welcome.
Thank you Mayor. So I just want to just mention a couple of things. And one is that I'm, I'm supporting table all three projects. And the reason I'm, I'm table, I'd like to table all three projects because I believe these are very important and big policy changes for the city of Monterey. And, and I don't think these three as presented have gone through the correct planning process as, as I've seen it in the past. So for me, I would, I'm in favor and support tabling all three items. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments?
I also have, looks like I'm, I also have some concerns about the process. And number one, since these are not sort of normal approvals, these involve significant land use and planning changes. I do feel like there, there needs to be a more rigorous and inclusive public engagement process. I do want to hear a little bit about this concept review because, you know, I didn't really think about it when I was reading the agenda, but in hearing from the public, it does seem like it's something new. And I want to make sure we don't open ourselves up for CQ challenges. And, and again, just in general, when we're making such major land use changes, it feels like there needs to be a more, a broader outreach to the public. I do want to just say a couple of things though, that projects that provide 50% affordable housing out of that project, those aren't, that's not inconsequential. That is significant. And if there's a way to fix the slow interchange, that's significant. So I do think that it's, it's maybe not, these are not simple decisions. And I don't want to necessarily just sweep them under the rug so that they never come back, which I think some speakers spoke to. But I do think we should table them and I think we need to have a plan for more full and complete engagements so that we can hear all of the positives and all of the negatives and that we can hear from all of the stakeholders.
Thank you, Alina. And I just would state in my 26 years on the council, starting in 1981, this is the first time I've seen a pre-approval, prejudgment of potential projects without the CQ, without an environmental impact report. So I just share with you, I've been concerned about process as well.
Mr. Mayor.
To answer your question, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if you give me a brief opportunity to just explain, because I think it is very important to clarify a few misnomers that were expressed in the previous discussions. So we, staff, we wanted to provide you today, just and, and the public, an opportunity to learn about these projects at the earliest time. And what is very important, Mr. Mayor, and you just said it, nobody is asking the council for a decision. This is not a vote that you take on any projects. You're not taking a vote, you were not asked to take a vote and you're not taking a vote pro or con against this project. If you, when we table those projects today, as staff suggests, it means that future applications for those project sites will come forward through the formal application process. And you can expect that. But today, you learned about the projects. The developer got a good dosage of public input today as well. They learned a lot about that. And you heard one of the developers also talking about the cost that it takes them to go forward with that. And today was just. an opportunity for the public, for the council, to learn about those projects that will, in all likelihood, come forward as a formal application. But I just wanted to stress again, there was no decision asked from council today. We are not bypassing the process. For us, was, it was an opportunity to provide everyone with a with an overview of those projects. And the good news is, we didn't make anyone happy today. Because everyone was was basically having something to say about the process, but the other good news is everyone is speaking about those project sites now as well. And everyone walks away a little bit smarter of that. And it will be not a case that when this part, when those projects come through the line, that somebody can say, why weren't we informed about this? Where is the public outreach? Where's the transparency? So I just wanted to clarify that because also council member Hafa and also you, Mr. Mayor, you spoke about taking a vote of pre-approval. This was never on the horizon. I just wanted to clarify that for the record, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. And you know what? I absolutely agree with you. It's not a formal pre-approval, but I would tell you in my experience from perception, even if we just chatted and we said, yeah, those all look good, green light, etc. The perception is they've been approved and blessed by the council. Now, is that, did that actually happen? No, but in my experience, what you said, how many of you said, what you said, and you committed to this and and so, yes, I agree, it's formally isn't an approval, but I think perceptually, it can be seen that way. Ed, Tyler, there's three of us. I think we're ready to table these. What are your thoughts?
So if I could ask staff an explanation on one of the figures while this is fresh in my mind, I just want to review figure four in item 11, Agenda Item 11. That is, I'm not sure how many pages in on Agenda Item 11. Figure four, where it talks about the city map of Window by the Bay, property ownership. If I if I track this, maybe it's just late and I'm seeing this crooked. But if you look at Camino Aguahito and Del Monte directly across it, it says, it's got a little arrow, More Motors. And that's in red, and it shows privately owned. So in my thinking, More Motors is further down, closer to Park. I'm just a little confused. So I want to make sure that I'm looking at the map and the nomenclature of the map. If maybe staff could start at Camino Aguahito and outline those properties.
Ed, what what page are you looking at, please?
Well, and I'm sorry, there's
164.
Okay, thank you. There's no page numbers on the agenda packet I have on the computer, but it's Agenda Item 11. And it's figure four. And Hans, the page number again?
164.
Yeah, that's it. I can see it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so starting with More Motors. I know it formally was down there somewhere. We currently own the building further east on Del Monte. So staff, can you tell me what it says? There's, it's More Motors. Is that correct?
I will punch a staff, but I agree with you, council members. Smith, if the red means privately owned property and the legend says More Motors, then it's not correct. It's the owned property leased to More Motors.
Yeah, it isn't More Motors on the other side of ZNS Motors down about Ocean and Del Monte?
Yeah, I, I hope somebody from community development can break into this conversation and clarify that, please.
Hi, this is Kim. You're correct. This was an older map, and we should have made that update. More Motors used to be located across from Camino Aguahito. It's not publicly owned. As part of the, that business moved down to where the old Europa, I think it was, or the business, it's the green building we now own, further down on Del Monte Avenue. So we do need to update this map a little bit from on the window on the bay. I apologize.
Yeah, and I guess it just needs a legend that, I mean, it could be that this is a good historical piece for folks to know what we spent and how we accumulated the properties, starting from the master plan. And I think it was 1939. And God bless those who came before us and the work that they did to have the vision to get us this far. Our conversation is, what do we do with Section B? And whether or not it's worth looking at the adjustments. So I think this is a good historical piece, but a current standing with the ledger that helps the public have the nomenclature and helps us as well. I I concur. I think there's a lot more that we can do if we table these. I think these are very, very complex. I I hold no position on any one of these three. I look forward to the opportunities on each of these and seeing what our opportunities are. I don't want to get too much into the merits of any one of these three because I'm, if this were a vote on anything, I am completely not ready. We haven't seen so much of this. And I don't want anything to circumvent. And I appreciate the city manager's review, and I understand what the attempt is to just have a conversation. And I kind of look at this as if we envision that we were in a study session, no vote, but we were studying, we would be asking a lot of technical questions. And we'd go home and sleep on it and come back in a month or two with stakeholders and engagement. So I kind of see that this is where we're at. And I think if we table this, maybe we have an opportunity to to dig into this a little bit more. I have a couple of specific questions on where we, where we are if we, on Del Monte, as an example. We know we have the master plan of 1939. We know we have the general plan that's outlined the Del Monte area as a Window by the Bay priority. And general plans usually, when they are amended, does it require a vote of the community to make large adjustments on land use in a general plan? Or can it be done with the council authority when we're talking about parcel and smaller parcels and smaller sections? So just a legal question on the general plan that gets modified about every 15 years, 20 years? But what what does this mean to
30 years.
Yeah. But what does this mean overall for the guiding doctrine called the general plan?
Okay, so. Respond to that if you'd like.
Yeah. Yes, please, our community development director.
So pursuant to state law, general plans can only be updated four times a year. So the state law purposefully limits the amount of time that you can amend a general plan. General plan amendments have to be considered first by the planning commission, adopted by resolution, a recommendation to the city council, and the city council has the authority to amend our general plan. And that can be a policy in our general plan, or it can be adopting a new housing element, which we do more frequently, for example, than the entire general plan. So the city council has that authority.
Did you have another question, I think, please?
No, just a closeout statement, not to belabor it. If I calculate the numbers that are just kind of in this rough 11, 12, and 13, it looks like it's about 245, 250 possible units. Throwing that against the RENA numbers, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, I think the numbers coming out, and then Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, in 2023, I serve on Ambag, as I mentioned before, so we grind through that. And we'll come out with new numbers, but our our current shortfall of the estimate of what we need, 245 units would probably get us more than 50% out of deficit. So I just leave that as a thought that I do have a priority to look for opportunities in housing. I don't know if this is it. But I'm always open for things that work and don't put conflicts between our commercial and our residential and the quality of life in Monterey. So I look forward to learning more.
Good, Ed. And I think on that general plan, the general plan, when we went through it years ago, we actually had a citizens committee. And it's not unlike your discussion about Ambag earlier about who, how to allocate money to the cities.
Right.
Yeah. And so it was pretty rigorous. We had a group of about 16 or 20, I forget, and went through the whole thing. And at that time, and subsequently, the whole idea of of housing was to concentrate in our commercial and mixed-use areas, to concentrate where we already had amenities and stores and public transportation and infrastructure. And that's the current general plan as far as emphasis. And that's why I think the council supported East Downtown housing overlay and also looked out at Garden Road. Because both are close to amenities, don't have to have a car. And also, Garden Road has, in my mind, a lot more potential for housing as well. So that would be part of the whole discussion, as you pointed out.
Yeah. And I want to, I'm glad you you pointed out the Garden Road that is underway. And I know there's some reconsideration of how the developer wants to adapt something else here. But I was on the downside of the vote where I wanted an EIR on that Garden Road change.
Yes, I remember.
And this project, if we're talking about 12 and maybe even, you know, 11, EIRs are very helpful. And I look forward to EIRs to help us that mitigate any large project that impacts our community. Because the the beauty of the EIR is we have to come up with some mitigation measures that that make it where it's going to work, or maybe it's not going to work. But I I think I value the the element of an EIR fairly early in a project.
Yes, well, I can guarantee the EIR on item 12 will be longer than a council packet, believe me.
Yes.
Yes. Tyler, any comments? You can kind of see where we're going and love to hear from you.
I I don't want to share all of my thoughts because it's not necessary, given the direction that I think we're going to be taking tonight. But I my experience with these, these types of situations that we're having tonight might be different than the rest of you because I've only been on the council for two years. And ever since I've been on the council, I wouldn't say this happens all the time, but this isn't the first time that we've done something like this. So I don't think from my perspective, I don't think we're surprised by staff approaching us with this type of way, especially given the fact that it's one of the stated priorities from the council. And given that on such these large projects, I think it is appropriate for staff, and I appreciate staff taking the effort to bring stuff in front of us before we make staff spend their time and all the folks involved, including the applicants and the developers on spending all this time going through the process when, if it ends up coming to the council, we're not even going to approve it. So I think it's helpful to give some kind of indication of general direction. I hear what you all are saying in regards to kind of maybe setting a certain tone. But perhaps a way to approach this moving forward is maybe directing staff to kind of maybe develop some policies around how we handle these types of things and when it's appropriate and when it's not for something to come in front of the council for general direction, not saying that we're agreeing with the project or whatever is in the developer's head. I think this is, to me, it seems very beneficial. And you raised a few, I think it was the mayor, around Garden Road, right? That came to us first before it went through the entire process that I had to go through. So it's not like it's a surprise. So anyways, that's just my general feelings. I, and I always get confused around the terminology of tabling versus like postponing. So I'm not really sure what we mean by tabling, but I would be interested in in maybe getting some clarity around when we expect these to come back in front of us, particularly number 13. I I feel like 11 and 12 are somewhat more related because they're focused on housing. So that might be one thing versus 13. Seems like it's a little bit of a different animal. It might be a tough and easier nut to crack. So anyways, I think it's appropriate for us to have a conversation so we can be clear and not just kind of leave it in the air because it sounds like nothing's going to be moving forward unless we have a discussion about this.
Yeah, and you know what? Your first comment about when when is it appropriate and when is it not appropriate? Sounds like a time for a retreat, council member. Hey.
I'm a I'm a retreat fan, so. Well, I see Ed smiling, too.
Then I would say that when we continue an item, we do it time-specific. Tabling doesn't mean it disappears. It simply means it has to go through a process. And I don't know if staff, we could ask Hans if where these are as far as going through process. But I, they always have an opportunity to make the application and go through the process. A lot would depend on the applicant. And so I don't know if Hans would be able to say, yes, we'll be looking at this within the next three months, six months, 12 months. I think a lot has to do with the developer. Hans, anything to add to that, the difference between continuing and tabling?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So COVID-19 does not stop the process for formal applications going through the planning process. So that was also one of the sentiments expressed about bringing those projects forward now during the limited outreach that we are doing through Zoom meetings. So COVID-19 has its impact, but the formal applications will be processed as state law mandates. I I cannot give you any more details than than what I already shared with you. It appeared to me that Mr. Slama was was indicating he wants to go forward with that project sooner than later. The the questions there with respect to certain changes are, in staff's opinion, also worthwhile discussion, discussing, I don't want to say monumental, but there were a lot of thinking in the city councils 20, 30 years ago when they limited warehouse or storage facilities to 5,000 square feet. There was a lot of thinking going into that that process, Mr. Mayor, you may recall it. And so those will be, it's also not an easy discussion to have. And I wouldn't be surprised if this project will be the, have, will have the first formal application filed and then reach the council level after it has been reviewed by all the other groups that that are working with that. So I wouldn't be surprised if we see this in front of council maybe in two or three months.
So I have a question, Mayor.
Council member Dan, please.
So is it the only way this, either one of these three projects come to the council is either by appeal? So what I mean, what I mean by that is that if it goes through the process and the the planning commission denies or accepts the process or the project, then either the the person that's putting the project forward, either appeal a decision by the planning commission, or someone will appeal the 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 decision by planning. Anyway, is that the only way it'll get to the councils? That's the question I wanted to ask.
On appeal? I think Ed helped answer that, Dan, a lot. If it's if it's a rezone, it would have to come to the city council, I believe. I see our community development. And probably if it's a general plan amendment, it would come to the city council. On the other hand, when we had the project at the old Eddie's site in North Fremont, that was approved by the planning commission. And that that was vested at that level. Nobody appealed it.
I see. So it's the zoning change that goes in front of the planning commission that would come to us?
Automatically, yes.
Not the project, but the zoning change.
Also, maybe just a little bit more background. There's two different actions. One's a legislative change, is changing the laws of the city, and only the city council can do that.
Yes.
And it's based in our code. It has to be from recommendation from planning commission to the city council. We will oftentimes with that legislative change, if there's a project associated with it, we'll bundle it in one in one action. So the city council will both make the legislative change, they'll certify the environmental document actually first, and then they will approve the project. It's usually all three of those items.
So the only reason, thank you. So the only reason I brought this up is that I want to make sure, because I think I'm hearing this from councilman Williamson, these three items will not come back in this form. These three items will come back that's been gone through the process either as a zoning change or an appeal on the project itself. But it won't come back in this formation.
Correct.
About that? Okay, thank you.
Again, that makes sense to me. Yeah, this was just giving you an overview over all the impacts that those projects may or may not have on all our plans.
I see. Thank you.
In order to make those changes, they will go through the process.
Consider it a trailer or a sneak preview of coming attractions.
I would call it transparency, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you know, I was just going to say, I think another element of this is, I think people I think people are paying a lot more attention to what's happening. I think a lot of the people that, that spoke during public comment are paying attention to what's happening at planning commission level and maybe ARC and other things. But I think most people are paying more attention to what's happening at the council level. So I think when we're talking about transparency, this was an absolutely great process. So I, I give kudos to the staff for putting, taking the time to put this together and presenting this to us. So thank you.
That's excellent. And as usual, a really fine discussion, I learned so much from you all. Are we ready to make a motion?
With one comment, Mr. Mayor.
You're going to make a motion or a comment first?
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion then a, a comment after we get a second. I'll make a motion that we table item eleven, twelve and thirteen as staff recommendations.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second and discussion, comments. Council member Ed, I have a feeling for some reason you wanted to make a comment.
Just a quick one. If we have, if we have a council retreat, I want it to start at seven AM, please.
And on a, on a Saturday.
Yes, that's, that's fine with me. I'm, I'm up at six thirty anyway, so.
Because I start at seven thirty Monday through Friday, so.
Was that PM or AM?
No, I, I, you know, seriously, I, I don't want to, I don't want to make like too much of it, but it is heavy lifting, it's important. There's a lot of potential results here. The community has already weighed in just a tiny bit. We're going to hear from the community more and look forward to that as well. And thank you for those that called today and got emails to us all. We really appreciate that. But we look forward to getting into more details for all three of these possibilities because there is a lot of heavy lifting. So looking forward to the ways that we can do that and we're willing to do the work as I know all of you are as well.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Council member Williamson?
Yes.
Council member Albert? Uh-oh. Council member Albert?
You have to unmute.
I'm sorry, you, you would think that I'd know how to do this, yes.
Okay, by Council member.
Yes.
Council member Hafa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes.
And once again, thank you, everybody, for such a, just a cordial discussion and expressing all the different viewpoints we have. Council comments, I would just remind us that we do have a closed session item that I'm hoping we can get to this evening. And so council comments.
I was just going to say.
Council member Tyler, you want to start us off this evening?
I was just going to say, Dan, it happens to, I think it's happened to all of us, so you're not the only one.
More than once.
More than once. Don't try to break my record. Council member Ed, you're going to start council comments.
Yes, just one thing I wanted to report on. Last week, the California, League of California Cities had a Zoom conference for three days, which I'll say I was logged on as much as I could be. One item, you all as a council authorized me to vote on a proposed resolution. That resolution was with some language that would ask for Congress, congresspersons or senators to look at the nineteen ninety-six decency law called two thirty, the federal statute. And the irony is, we went through that meeting, it failed to have a quorum to be able to sustain a vote. So it's going to come back to some of the committees with additional recommendations in the future. And the irony is just this week, I believe that the US Congress is now focusing in on two thirty and asking for some hearings, possibly even in the Senate in the future, for some reforms of two thirty. So stand by and watch, but the nineteen ninety-six legislation, that's the guidelines of controlling liability, the FCC, on mainly social media. So two thirty went nowhere in the lead California cities. And stand by and we'll watch it as it moves its way through either the Senate or the House as they propose some changes.
And thank you for serving on all those committees, we appreciate it. Council member Dan, please.
Thank you. During our MST meeting, they, there was a presentation by staff that there's a new project that you, you folks might be interested in. It's called Surf, Busway and Rapid Transit Project. Maybe you've heard of it, maybe you haven't. But it's a direct bus line from Marina to Seaside. And it, what it does is it takes the buses off of Highway One and makes it a bus route running parallel along the ocean side of Highway One. And the result is it's a faster commute for people. And, and they believe that now the buses don't have to make a stop or they don't have to be caught in the traffic early in the morning or late in the afternoon. It's currently in the sequel process and the funding is in several sources. TMC's already committed a measure X fifteen million. And then we still have to come up with another forty-five million. But it seems like a, a, a good transportation model to, to bring our buses down that corridor without them actually being on the highway. I think that's a, it's a great idea. It's, it's, the, the board approval, our approval won't, won't start until September two thousand twenty-one. While the project design won't, won't end until two thousand twenty-two. So we won't see any construction until then. And then also the, the comment on, one of the public comments on smoking in public places. I, I thank you, Clyde Mayor, for bringing that up because I'd like to see the council pursue some, some type ordinance in that area. I think Pacific Grove has a very similar ordinance. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Council member Alan?
I will defer my comments, thank you.
Council member Tyler?
Yes, so the only thing I will say is you may have been hearing some of the, the discourse around the Pure Water Monterey project and some of the issues that it's been having. So just to give some like big picture context, there are four wells. Two of them are shallow wells, two of them are deep wells. One of the shallow wells had a, a sinkhole kind of, it's not really technically called a sinkhole, but it's, if you can imagine a sinkhole around it. And so they shut them both down because there were some issues with them. So they're getting fixed. There's the two deep wells and the deep wells weren't operating at, at the efficiency level that we expected and being able to provide enough acreage feet of water going through them at one time. And so those are being worked on. In addition, we're adding two additional deep wells to the, to the Pure Water Monterey project, which means we'll be able to take in a lot more source water. And, and the second, the third, the third deep well that's being added, we're currently going through the process of, actually, we just received bids earlier this week and it should be developed no later than next November. So that's really exciting news, given the fact that there's been some delays in, in that project, despite the fact that we're still pumping, pumping water into the aquifer now. So anyways, just kind of wanted to give folks an update on that. That's the biggest thing that's happening with this on Monterey One Water.
Oh, great. And, and thanks to every, all the council members for serving on outside agencies and jurisdictions. You devote a lot of time to the community and you're appreciated. All right, city manager reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reports from the city manager tonight.
All right, then we'll thank everybody for attending, our staff, our, our council, the public that is helping us to navigate through Zoom, Google Meet, et cetera. And as always, all the teachers, parents, grandparents and students who are out there doing distance learning. Oh, I could tell you some stories, but that's for a different time. So we will adjourn to a closed session. Now, does anyone who wants a public comment on closed session?
Yes, if there is anyone, we'll put up the Chiron now. And please call in or raise your hand for closed session comments. And I don't believe we have any at this time.
All right, once again, thank you. And we're adjourned and we'll see everybody in about five minutes on closed session. Good evening.